You want, you want to do one?
Thank you. That's awesome. That's a good thing. I haven't had a chance to say hello. Thank you so beautiful.
I now call to order the regularization meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand nineteen at six thirty P M. Roll call please.
Mayor Alahouzes?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Monsignor Pala Grino from the Saint Ignatius Church, from the Roman Catholic Church on Tarpon Avenue. If you please stand and remain standing.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Tarpon Springs. We thank you for the service of our Vice Mayor David Banther and Commissioner Susan Michio Kikta. They have sacrificed themselves for this community and deserve our gratitude and continual respect. We thank you for the service of our Mayor Chris Alahouzes, who will be continuing in office. Watch over him and help him to lead our city to greater progress for all who reside here. We thank you for our newly elected Commissioners Townsend Tarpani and Connor Donovan. May they give the best of themselves to this commission and to our city. Help all on this commission to engage in meaningful discussion, allow them to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill them with your grace, Lord God, as they make decisions that will affect the citizens of Tarpon Springs. And continue to remind them that all that they do, that they do here today, all that they accomplish is for the pursuit of truth and for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing. Mary Kelly, Raimo, please come forward. Presentation of colors.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commander, please retire the colors. Thank you. Please be seated. Mary Kelly, thank you for the wonderful national anthem. Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome the Honorable Council General of Greece Dimitrios Spares, who is here with us tonight. Also, I'd like to recognize the past city officials of Tarpon Springs. The Honorable Anira Prodos, the Honorable John Terrapeni, the Honorable James Colianis, and the Honorable Pete Dalakis. With us today also, we have Dave Eckers, the Commissioner of Pinellas County, the friend of Tarpon Springs. Thank you. Now, we will start with a presentation to Vice Mayor Banther. Vice Mayor Banther, as a token of appreciation for the services that you provided to the City of Tarpon Springs, we would like to present you some gifts. We'd like to present you with the, with the plaque. Which says, David Banther, in recognition and appreciation of dedicated and devoted service as the City Commissioner in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen as the Vice Mayor, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and two thousand nineteen. The City of Tarpon Springs Florida, Mayor Chris Alahouzes, Vice Mayor David Banther, Commissioner Ray Seber, Commissioner Susan Kikta, and Commissioner Jacob Carr. Congratulations, and thank you for your service. A symbol that always represents our culture in Tarpon Springs is the sponge helmet. So we went up. Thank you. We also like to give you your name tag. Commissioner Seber has a presentation to, he has a gift to give.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to say, David, we may not have always agreed, but I appreciate your civility and your kindness. And I'll never forget our trip last year to Greece together. It was a pleasure to get to know you better and Ruth as well. And so I have a memento from Greece.
Wait, 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 wait. The best picture from all is when you were driving the tricycle.
Yeah.
And if David didn't know how to stop, he almost went into the water.
The mayor of Hock, he had to stop.
I was bigger than, than.
Couldn't find the brake.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta also has a gift to give you.
Just a little something. You know, we sit up here twice a month at least, and I've sat next to you quite some time now. And our city clerks always have snacks for us. If it's not chocolates, it's candies. And I like the chocolate, and Vice Mayor likes the candy. So this is something to put on your desk.
Thank you.
So you can munch on every day.
I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you.
Well, Vice Mayor, we know how much do you like socks? And we thought that we'd give you some socks so you can remind you some of the things that did you hear in Tarpon Springs. I'm going to give you a pair of socks with the American flag, and we'll remind you of the services, you service the Tarpon Springs.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh my gosh.
Also, we have another pair of socks to remind you of your culture.
Yes.
And your trip to Ireland. And this is David Banther, the load mayor. When we visited Greece for the sister cities, David got to, you know, the Greek mati, and he got to believe it so much, so we thought we'd give him a pair of socks with the Greek mati, so he'd always be protected.
I, 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 I do need those. Thank you.
Yeah. When he was in Kalimnos, he was introduced to philla. Of course, David needs to know that philla and dolmas is the same food, right?
Yes, yes. Now I know, now I know.
So we have a cookbook from the Tarpon Springs Sister City, and on page forty-eight, David, is, it shows you how to make philla.
Thank you.
Your wife asks your wife to make philla for you at least once a week. So that's page forty-eight. It's already worked for you.
Thank you very much.
When he was, when he was, when we were all in, in Greece, in Kalimnos in particular, Michelle and Irene introduced David to propochino, now Fredo cappuccino. So David got to like it so much when he came back to Tarpon Springs, he continued having that every Friday. So we have a special treat for you. We have a delivery of Fredo cappuccino for just for you.
It's a, it's a personalized mug, too.
Did you go there today?
Uh, no, Friday, right? Friday, Friday, I'll guess.
So it was appropriate to give it to you, right?
Yes, thank you.
We also have gifts for Commissioner Kikta for her service as the Commissioner here in Tarpon Springs. Susan Kikta, it was a pleasure working with you. I'd like to present you with the, with the plaque that says, Susan Michio Kikta, in recognition and appreciation of dedicated and devoted service as the City Commissioner two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. The City of Tarpon Springs Florida, Mayor Chris Alahouzes, Vice Mayor David Banther, Commissioner Ray Seber, Commissioner Susan Kikta, and Commissioner Jacob Carr. Congratulations again. Thank you for your service. Thank you. We also have local wear. We have a paperweight with your name on it and the seal of the City of Tarpon Springs. And this is your, your name tag. When we traveled to Greece, Commissioner Kikta was not able to be with us, but when we're there, we're constantly thinking about you. In Kalimnos, we got to know the sculpture that is making the different items, including the sculpture that we expected to get in Tarpon Springs. So we've got this tablet for you, just so you remember our trip to Greece and of course in Tarpon Springs. This is Tarpon Springs, but it was actually made in Kalimnos. Those of you who know Susan know that she likes to be on the boat, and when she's on the boat, she always has to be the captain. So we want everybody to, to, to remember that she is a captain. So here's a hat for you. Congratulations. Commissioner Kikta, Commissioner Seber also has a gift to give you. Don't go away.
I just want to say, Susan, I've known you a long time, and I appreciate all the years of service, nine years of service to our city. You're invaluable as far as your knowledge and your experience, and I'm going to miss you and appreciate everything that you've done for the city. And I know how passionate you are about Tarpon Springs.
Well, Vice Mayor Banther has a special gift for you.
I'm not the only one that's responsible for this. So, 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 you know, Susan had a very uncanny ability to like, to like predict exactly when all the meetings will end. We would sit down, we'd say what time tonight. She would say eight forty-five, and it would end at like eight forty-five. So we, we got you a Mr. Well, you know, that's, that's like nine years, yeah. This is a Mr. Predicto, you know, the, the, with, the President Trump edition. So he can help you predict things in the future.
Well, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone, and I want to thank you all for being here tonight to the installation ceremony of the City of Tarpon Springs, which is a fine example of the great American tradition, of the peaceful tradition, tradition and transition of the local government reflecting the voters' wishes. The City of Tarpon Springs has spoken through the ballots, but today we will instate and reinstate the candidates our citizens have chosen, and we are committed to work together, all of us as a team, to better serve the City of Tarpon Springs. As to my reelection, I would like to thank my campaign team for their hard work and dedication. Thank you very much. To Vice Mayor Banther, who is stepping down to the term limits. He served two full terms, three years terms, six years total. And I want to thank David for his cooperation, working together with me, in particular, when he was, when I was in the hospital, he was a great help to me. David, thank you. Also, for our journey to Greece, we visited the sister cities. Vice Mayor Banther, he was instrumental establishing the Citizens Academy Program, which has been very helpful in educating the people and, you know, about their government and encouraged them to participate. David, because of you, are now the advisory boards. They have many people to choose from, so thank you very much. I also like to thank Commissioner, Commissioner Kikta. She served two terms as the Commissioner, and then she was term limited. And then she was elected again three years ago, the same time when I was elected as a mayor, and we're accomplishing a great deal together. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Kikta for all her accomplishments, and I want to thank her for the services. How many years? Nine, nine years. That's a long service. Thank you for all your services. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our Commission of Commons, Commissioner Seber.
Well, this is kind of bittersweet. I'm, I'm happy to, to be working with a new board, but I'm a little sad that we're losing both of you because you've, you know, you've accomplished so much, and we've worked very well together, and I feel like we've moved forward in the last three years and with you, Susan, and last six years with you, David. I'll always remember our time in Greece because David tried to speak Greek. We even had a, a meeting with the Commission in Kalimnos, and David spoke Greek. So I, I applaud you for your courage, and you did a good job. And, and he knows more Greek than most people think because he just all of a sudden will come out with something and.
Tell him to say that. That's usually pretty weird.
So you never know what's going to come out of David's mouth, but I love his sense of humor, and, and I'm going to miss you. And as I said, Susan, we've been friends a long time. You've devoted much time to the city. You are someone who is out there. You, you just are part of Tarpon Springs and, and the community and are just so involved, and you have so much knowledge from your nine years of service that I appreciate everything you've done and probably will continue to do. So thank you, Susan.
Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. Vice Mayor Banther, it's been a privilege to serve with you on the Board of Commission. Really enjoyed it, and thank you for all of your advice and all of your wisdom that you've brought to the board throughout the past six years and me being honored for the past two years with you. It was one of those things that we grew up, we played Little League together. It was fun. I know there wasn't a whole lot of years of that. I don't think baseball was necessarily the sport that you chose to follow, but, and then also, we had the chance to serve on the Historic Preservation Board together, and that was really exciting. We served, I think, for about two or three years together in that. And then having the privilege again to serve on the Board of Commission, it's really been an honor. You should be proud of everything you've done. You've done a lot of great things for the city. And you really, I, I know there's a lot more that goes into being a city commissioner that people don't always see or the residents don't always see, and Sue, this goes to you also. Just, I think you all should both leave very proud for all the things that you've accomplished over the past many years of serving as a, on the commission. There's a lot of selfless nights because you're giving up so many nights away from family, away from friends, away from work, to serve the community who elected you both. So thank you both for your service, and Sue, thank you so much for your dedication that you came back for a second time around for reelection. And I know, again, we didn't always agree, but that's, that's the best part about the commission is that we find ways to work together and find a compromise. And if we don't agree, then we move on to the next item, and we don't hold it against each other. So thank you for working with the board and all your service during the past nine years. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kikta, you want to say something?
Oh, of course. When have I never wanted to say something? But first, I just wanted, before I go into my speech and everything, I just want to thank this current board for the last three years. It's, I don't even have to say it. Been an amazing journey. I have made some great friends here. We've done some really good things for Tarpon Springs. There's been some crazy votes up here. And of course, you know, there's many that none of, we didn't all agree on, but like as Commissioner Carr said, we moved on. You know, we're here to serve the city. And so if we did, so we don't agree on issues, it doesn't matter because that's what you've elected us to do, basically, is devote what we feel is right for our community. But again, we didn't hold grudges. We've moved on from, and from different issues. I've enjoyed each, every, each and every one of you. I've enjoyed each and every one of you. You know, Ray and I have been friends for how many years? A long time. So, and I think I've asked her to run, I think I've encouraged Jacob to run. So again, these are, you know, and I didn't know you until you ran. Yeah, but we, and Chris, oh my God, we've known each other for how many years? So we all have a history together, and I'm glad, and I'm so happy that I was able to serve with all of you. But as you all know, this is my last stage as your commissioner. I've had to serve this community for nine years. Oh, and I forgot Mark, but I'll get to you. During those years, we've had many accomplishments, accomplishments, which I'm very proud of. We had hundreds of votes and dozens of issues, going live with our water treatment plant, building a new fire station, expanding reclaimed water and sewer, revitalizing the downtown, City Hall reorganizations, improving our parks and boat ramps, operating on a balanced budget without using reserves, continuing to move forward with green initiatives, and protect our environment while growing our tax base. This is just a handful of accomplishments over the past nine years. But what I really want to say is thank you. I've had an absolutely wonderful time representing the residents of this beautiful town of Tarpon Springs, and I owe my success to some people who I would publicly want to thank. First, I want to thank my family. For me, nothing is possible without their support. Over the years, there have been some tough decisions to be made for this community, and my family sat and listened to me as I weighed the options many hours, days, and nights. They did not sign up for this, and many times, I'm sure, that they would have preferred me to be home instead of events in town or very late meetings. But I could not have done it without their support. I want to thank Trish, who is our assistant upstairs. She is our backbone. She's so awesome. We've become very dear friends over the past nine years. We talk every day. She's kept me on track with all events, meetings, and has been great support to me. I want to thank all the staff here at City Hall. We did some reorganizations over the past few years, and I feel that the current staff that we have now is truly the best staff that there has been. They work very hard as a team to get the job done, and I can't thank you all enough. They are, it's like a family here. It truly is. I want to give a special thank you to our city clerk and our deputy city clerk. Where's Michelle? Here she is. These two are the glue to our city. Irene and Michelle go above and beyond every day. If you spend any time in the clerk's office, you will see and feel the positive vibes and the great morale from all employees who work in the clerk's office. They work as a team and as a family, and all of you, I can't thank you enough. You wouldn't believe the support that they give all of us. And I'd like to thank our first responders. We are very lucky to have our own police and fire departments, and I hope they continue to get the support of this board and our residents. Thank you for keeping our residents safe. As for our city manager, Mr. Laquara, Mark and I go back a very long time. I think I met him when he was first a patrolman with the police department. It's a long time ago. But my first vote ever as a city commissioner in 2008 was to make Mark our new city manager. And let me tell you, that was not an easy vote to make. That was my first vote. I was a swing vote. It was, I'll never forget the night. Remember that night?
I remember.
I think the jaws dropped on some of the people out in the audience. They were just like, what is she doing? And I actually got phone calls from residents the following day asking me to retract my vote, saying that, you know, I was so new, I didn't realize what I was doing. But I'm glad I didn't do that, because Mark has done an amazing job for our city. Yes, there are times that Mark, he needs to be reeled in and remember who the boss is, but we have that kind of relationship, and we move on from it if there's some issues and some remarks made to one another, but we move on. We don't hold a grudge. There's so much more to what Mark does than what most of you know out there, but I know what he does for the city and how he helps others in this community. And I know that in your heart, that Tarpon Springs is truly, truly in your heart, Mark, and I want to thank you. And it's been a pleasure to work with you, and you know that I'll be calling you periodically. You know that. I've had a pleasure working with many commissioners and mayors through the years. We didn't always agree on issues, but at the end of the day, we put our differences aside and moved on and continued to work together as a city, to serve the city, as we were elected to do. I'm sorry I didn't have more time to work with our attorney, Tom Trask, who's been newly appointed to this board. Tom, I know you're going to do a great job for the city, and I'm sorry, like I said, I didn't get enough time to spend with you, but I know you're going to do great. I'd also like to thank those who ran for election at this term. I appreciate your passion for the city, and I hope you keep that passion during your term. And remember that when you vote, vote for all residents. And finally, and most importantly, I want to thank the residents of the city for trusting me to be a voice in this community. I have gotten to meet many residents through the years and gained some new friendships. And I can say without reservation that with every vote I took, I had the best interest of you in my mind and in my heart. Thank you for the honor to serve.
Mark, before we go to the public comments, do you want to say something?
Yeah. I never thought you'd mention that again about your vote, but that's true. Wasn't really a vote against me, if you voted against me when it was time to be chosen city manager. It was a vote whether to go out and look elsewhere after I had served this interim several times. Susan had no reason to vote for me that night. She was brand new. She was under pressure. She could have done the easy thing and said, well, let's go out and look some more and let's do that. But I think she knew my character, and she had a faith in me. And from the time she cast that deciding vote, I made sure that everything I did in the future was to make sure no one came back to her and told her that vote was wrong, because she truly didn't know my love for Tarpon Springs. She put her faith, I mean, her supporters, you could see some of them gasping in the audience when she voted for that, because they weren't exactly, not necessarily fans of me, but fans of somebody coming over to the police department and running the city. So I always will thank you for that. I tell that story to everybody. I tried not to tell it in public, because I don't want, but you told it in public, so I will always forever be grateful to you. And as far as David goes, David is old school like me and a man of his word. We got a good relationship working together. We gave each other our words, what I would do for him and what he would do for me, and he never wavered from that word. And these days in time, it's hard to find people who live by their word. But he truly is, and I hope I did everything and got everything done he wanted to do, because he did put that faith and trust, and when he told me something, I could take it to the bank, and that's very rare. And I thank you for that. So both of you, in the time we've served together and got a lot done, I appreciate you, and you're the kind of commissioners that makes it easy for me to work and be city manager and do things. So thank you both very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Panther, you got the final word.
Yes, thank you. I first want to thank Susan. You served nine years collectively. That's more, maybe there's a handful of people alive that have done that. So that is a lot to be proud of. I remember when you first ran, I think I ran your opponent's campaign. I hadn't known you yet, but when I quickly got to know you, even though we don't agree on all the issues, I knew we had the same character. And it's just been a pleasure up here to serve with you, and your institutional knowledge of Tarpon Springs, you always want to have a good time and have fun. You brought some life to our meetings, and even on issues like Sunday, where you and I were deeply divided, though I knew you were voting for your conscience, and the reason that you felt was right, and you stuck to that under pressure, even like with the city manager thing that was way before my time. So thank you for that very much. I wanted to say just thank you very much to the residents of Tarpon Springs for giving me six years up here. When I took the seat six years ago, I said, it's the honor of a lifetime to serve my hometown. But I can say, six years later, that is the truth. I first want to thank my family. This is a family affair. I think like Commissioner Susan said, your family sacrifices when you're here. It's not just two nights a month. You have workshops, you have ribbon cuttings and everything. So I want to thank my wife and daughters. I dragged my wife from the Freezing Macy's Day Parade when the Tarpon High Band was in there, to two meetings with the Lord Mayor in Ireland, who didn't even know where Florida was mostly, and over to the islands in Greece. She was always there by my side with a smile. But I think my daughters are the most excited, because they get to actually watch a parade now instead of having to be in one. So I think they're excited about that, but they'll still try and throw candy, I'm sure. I just want to say, we have the best city staff, you know. Being, you know, in this role, you get exposure to a lot of different commissions. I'd go to the league stuff that I was forced to go to or other things I had to do. And, you know, you get to see other staff, and our staff is the best. And you can see that in the Citizens Academy, when staff talks to the class over the course of eight weeks. That's the main thing we hear at the graduation, was that people that work here love it, and I mean, it shows. So I would put our staff here, you know, up against anybody, and you have to have staff that supports you to make this role a success, because we're here part-time. Staff's here every day. So having great staff is very important. There's some staff that have been just excellent. We have the best police chief in Florida. You know, I think if you look at our accreditation process, how much our agency has changed, we are now a leader in the state, and also, he would give Grady Judd a run for his money in all aspects. He's very quiet and shy, but trust me, he's not. With our fire department, you all know I had a love for them. Chief Young has just revamped that entire department. When I came onboard, they didn't have even like a fire boat, and just working with him, even probably overstepping my bounds sometimes, we grew that department to what it is now. Even with Chief Young's first week, we had Hurricane Irma, and he did a fantastic job. So thank you very much. But there's two women that really made my life easy here, and it's our city clerks. Irene, you know, you definitely are the diplomat in the office, always standing by. I don't think you slept in Greece for two weeks, because every time we had to be somewhere at 4:00 a.m., you were just there. But Michelle's more like the pit bull. She's the guardian. It wasn't until my second term in office where I got the privilege to actually step into her office, which is the seat of power in Tarpon Springs. So I always say that Irene kept me out of jail, and Michelle kept my attitude in check. So thank you very much. You know, and also, Michelle's responsible for my Fredo addiction, so thank you for that as well. Mark, as you said, when I first met with you, I said, I'm going to be open with you, and you'll be open with me, and this will work out. And that always was the case. You know, I know there's been residents, you know, here and there that call for us to fire you and this and that, and that's going to be the case with any city manager we have. But you always did what I asked you to do, even if I know a lot of times you didn't like it too much, and I appreciate that very much, and that is your role. And you were one that would close the door and just scream and go at it, and then we left, and then it was fine. There's probably not a lot of city managers that could have put up with me, so I appreciate that very much. And Ruth's promised to make you your brownie still.
Oh, thank you.
For your birthday. Let's see what else they got here. Also, you know, it really is a privilege, like Commissioner Carr touched on, to get to serve with people here in your hometown. Commissioner Carr mentioned baseball. Yeah, we were in Little League. I think it was like AAA division. I was horrible. I know I couldn't hit the ball at all. So I mostly warmed the bench, and he actually got to play. So that has been great to be with you on like that level, and now getting to serve here with you. And then Commissioner Tera Pani, we got to meet in 2010, when you were campaigning, and what started as just campaign friends grew to a friendship and now business partners. So thank you very much for that. I do appreciate that. And I just want to express, you know, I don't feel need to list off all of my accomplishments. I think they're self-evident, but I want to emphasize just the Anclup River dredge. We came so close to the, basically at the finish line, then we have a little issue now with our federal funding. And that's from the support of many private citizens, this board, previous boards to this. So I am very encouraged that this new board's going to be picking this up and keeping that fight up. We have to keep pressure on DC to restore that, you know, federal funding. It's not the sexiest thing to talk about, but it really is a pillar for our community. I want to offer the incoming board my full support. I'm very excited to see where you all, you know, take the city. If I can ever help you, especially with the dredge, always reach out to me. People often ask what the future holds for me. Well, first off, I'm looking forward to, you know, to hockey playoff season, and hopefully a Stanley Cup, going to all the playoff games, and a summer free of all the workshops and evening meetings. But it is my desire to come back here on this board, you know, at a future date. So in closing, I just want to say, let's not forget that we are very lucky to live here. There's many people in Pinellas County that, you know, don't get this privilege. So we all need to work to, you know, give back where we can if it's serving here on the city commission, or volunteering in our community, or at your church. Just, you know, do what you can to help make Tarpon Springs better. So that's all, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Any comments? Here none, well, thank you. And we are now going to the consent agenda. Item number three. A is March 19, 2019, regularization. Those minutes have been corrected, and those corrections have been sent to everyone. B is March 26, 2019, legalization. Any items that you'd like to pull? Okay.
Jacob, no.
Any commission comments? Are there any public comments on the item number three? The chair will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
As the minutes have been corrected, right? Thank you. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Panther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahousses?
Yes, thank you. Next is item number four, is the Resolution 2019-08, ratification of elections results. City Attorney, if you please read the resolution.
Yes, this is Resolution 2019-08. I'm going to read it in its entirety. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying and confirming the results of municipal election held on March 12, 2019, and providing for an effective date hereof. Whereas the municipal election of the City of Tarpon Springs was held on the 12th day of March 2019, and whereas the names of Chris Alahousses and David O. Archie appeared on the official ballot as candidates for the office of mayor, and whereas the names of Connor Donovan and Susan Michio Kikta appeared on the official ballot as candidates for the office of Commissioner, Seat 3. And whereas the candidate for office of Commissioner, Seat 4, Townsend Tera Pani, was unopposed, and pursuant to Section 101.252 Florida statutes, is by law elected to such office. And whereas the Pinellas County Canvassing Board has validated and confirmed the election of returns for each candidate as follows. Mayor, Chris Alahousses, 2,659. David O. Archie, 2,071. Commissioner, Seat 3, Connor Donovan, 2,467. Susan Michio Kikta, 2,156. Whereas the returns showing the number of votes cast in relation to the referendum item submitted to the voters pursuant to Resolution 2018-31 have been validated and confirmed by the Pinellas County Canvassing Board as follows. City of Tarpon Springs referendum question. Economic development, property tax exemption for new businesses and expansion of existing businesses. Shall the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida be authorized a grant pursuant to Section 3, Article 7 of the State Constitution? Property tax exemptions to new businesses and expansions of existing businesses that are expected to create new full-time jobs in the city. 2,675 voted yes. Two thousand six hundred seventy-five voted yes for authority to grant the exemption. One thousand five hundred twenty-two voted no against the authority to grant the exemptions. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs that. Section one. The returns and findings of the Pinellas Canvassing Board be and the same are hereby ratified and confirmed in all respects. Section two. Chris Alahuzis is hereby declared to be legally and lawfully elected to the office of mayor for a term of three years commencing April nine, two thousand nineteen. Section three. Connor Donovan is hereby declared to be legally and lawfully elected to the office of Commissioner Seat Three for a term of three years commencing April nine, two thousand nineteen. Section four. Townsend Terrapini is hereby declared to be legally and lawfully elected to the office of Commissioner Seat Four for a term of three years commencing April nine, two thousand nineteen. Section five. Referendum Amendment for Economic Development, Property Tax Exemption for new businesses and expansion of existing businesses has been approved by the electorate of the City of Tarpon Springs. Section six, that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. That was the reading of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero eight in its entirety.
Thank you. Well, that's a straightforward. Is it certified by uh Pinellas County Canvassing Board? Any commission comments? Here none. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. The chair will detain the motion.
Approved.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. That concludes the current board agenda, and we're gonna go to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed tonight. Any comments? If you have any, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given four minutes.
Good evening. Peter Delakis, five one four Ashland Avenue. Uh may I have a moment to ask the clerk, what was the percentage of voters that voted in this election? Do you have that? Approximately? Twenty-five percent?
We don't have it offhand.
Okay.
I apologize. I can get that for you.
No, but in general, last we spoke, it was around twenty-five under thirty, correct?
Yes, it was a total of approximately four thousand votes of eighteen thousand in some some of the races.
So those of us here are here because we're concerned citizens. And we have to applaud this process that allows us to continue to move forward in a peaceful manner. But when less than thirty percent of our citizens decide our future, that's something we have to be concerned about. And I know these people up here and the ones coming up, they're gonna hear from those people complaining who didn't vote. So I would urge you in future elections, please get involved. Find out who is speaking the truth and who is speaking your issues. Now, I also wanted to address another issue. Sometimes we get caught up in all these different news cycles and we forget things. And I was sitting in the back trying to think about how to word what I want to word. And I heard all these children's voices. And a lot of times with parents, we want to keep them quiet. Shh, quiet, 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 shh. Come on, kids, be quiet, shh. But that voice reminds us of something. Our inner selves. And where are we at this point as Americans? When we will tolerate children separated from their families for whatever reason that is? And we don't speak out to our representatives and those in power? Then shame on us. Because those are the voices many people talk about saving or whenever they're talking about gun control, protecting the kids. Well, why are we separating which kids we're going to protect? They're all God's children, just as we are. Thank you.
Thank you. No, no, please don't do that. No, no clapping, please. Any other here public comments that will not be discussed tonight? Yes.
I didn't think I would be speaking, uh so I'll make it brief. George Petidis, seven one six Cypress Park Avenue. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners and everyone that serves on this esteemed board. I remember serving in other capacities in my life. And when everything runs smoothly, there is no controversy, which is a beautiful thing. And people seem to think correctly so. If it ain't broke, don't try to fix it. So while I am grateful for my brother, Mr. Delakis's comments, I don't think necessarily that a low percentage of people voting is necessarily an indication that anything is wrong. I want to emphasize that with a big thank you to uh Mayor Alahuzis, all the commissioners, and everyone that serves on this council. Everything has been going great. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Here none. Now we go to the staff comments. Police chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Um just want to wish um Vice Mayor Banther and Commissioner Kikta the best. It's been an honor to work with you through these years, and you've been you've been awesome at what you both did. So again, wish you the best in all your future endeavors. Thank you.
City attorney?
No comments, thank you.
City manager?
You gave me a chance earlier, so.
City clerk?
Um I also would like to wish Vice Mayor Banther and Commissioner Kikta well. Um it's been a pleasure to work with you and for you, and you know you're always welcome back in the clerk's office anytime.
I had the good food.
Commissioner Kik? Any comment?
Um I think I said everything again. Um thank you all for being here tonight and for caring about our community, and it's been a pleasure serving with this board and my previous boards um and serving the residents of this community. I I'm I'm already busy. I'm serving on other boards in town. Um so I am still active in the community. So I know that um, like I said, Mark will be hearing from me quite a bit, I'm sure. And uh Raya, we talk every day, so um but I I won't be a stranger to these chambers. Um I will be here and I'll be keeping up on what is happening in the community because we do have a wonderful, wonderful town here, and I'm thank you for, again, trusting me to serve your community. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pan?
Yes, thank you. I I I just I just want to make sure that I say to you to you to you, to you, Mayor, thank you for your comments about how 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 I got to serve, not under the best situation when you were uh not not, you know, feeling well. But I'm very happy that that I that I was able to do that, and I'm very happy that 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 you were you were you were you were you were reelected. And and congratulations on that. That was a hard fought campaign. And also Commissioner Seber, it's 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 been a pleasure to serve with you. Uh what I like about you, Mo, is that no matter how much we can we we can we can disagree, you always and it can can make me smile and laugh, and I appreciate that very much, and I I'll never forget our 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 times in Greece. We 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 always reference that like like it was scandalous or something. It really was not, but it was just very funny. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Seber?
I've probably said enough, but I just want to thank both of you again for your service and your friendship. And you guys are around, so it's not like I'm not gonna see you anymore, but uh you know, I definitely want to stay in touch and and ask for advice and uh and I appreciate you guys a lot. Thank you.
Uh just to reiterate, it's been an honor to serve with you both. Thank you for your service and the time that you spent up here on this board. Uh I know you all had a lot of uh a lot of residents that reached out to you all, so don't hesitate to push them towards the mayor for any other issues that may come up over the next three years. You can send them my way, too. That's fine. But thank you again for all your service and everything you've done.
Thank you. And I also like to uh again to thank Vice Mayor Panther, Commissioner Kikta. I enjoyed working with you. It was a pleasure serving the people of Tarpon Springs with you. Thank you. Well, this meeting is adjourned, signed by at uh seven twenty-six PM. And we will take a short break to move the seating around.
You can't leave.
I do. I do. Let Leon speak in there. I do. Thank you so much. Thank you. I'll see you Friday. Thank you. And I'll talk.
I talk.
Sorry. Sue, wait, 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 wait for your dad. Thank you for the mark I go tomorrow night as well.
They do it immediately.
You know, you can bring both of them to the board at the same time.
Grandad. Excuse me, grandad. Mama. Mama. Can I tell you something? Cooked up so hard. Can you come here, mama? Thank you, mama.
All right, go ahead. Come on.
Okay, mama.
Oh, this is her phone, too, obviously. How are you, Carol? We talk on the phone, but that's about it.
No, that's it, though. You're doing all right.
Yep.
Okay, this is off to the next one. Did you take? That's Carr. Okay, we'll go there. I'll get this. Donovan. Carr.
We have six lawyers doing municipal law, and then we have one lawyer doing real estate. That suggests um Kathy George and Dunedin.
I'm gonna write some names down.
Here, here you go. You want to write it on that? I would say Kathy George and Dunedin.
Pretty good.
Yeah, or Scott Schultz. S H I L T Z. Scott was my attorney.
Who is he at?
Dunedin.
Dunedin as well? Yeah, he's got he's trying to work it out. I think they have no young kids. And there's a lot going on. Because without an attorney, he can't go file anything, can he?
Yeah, he can file, um but he would have to serve her and vice versa, so. That's exactly right.
And he would want to. He needs to get an attorney first. And tell him to check him out. I appreciate it. I feel bad for him. Young, and I said, it's not gonna work out. You can try and talk to him for two months.
Even if he doesn't report with it, he should give some advice. That um can tell him what he should or should not.
This is Raya. This is Raya. No, it's from me. Do I just stick it anywhere?
Yeah, just there.
No, I stopped.
Michelle? I'll give you a hug. Thank you very much. Thank you. Though it's though it's personalized, don't worry. That was the best.
It's not engraved. Are you sure? Because you can't it's hard to see. You can't see it.
Talk openly now.
You'll have to have to go tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Thank thank you for all the socks, too.
The socks are awesome.
They are.
There's his bed. Okay, his pants in there.
Oh, very come on, come on. He's
In the mayor's seat. Come here.
He was like on the microphone immediately.
May they lead this city, participating as city officials in ways of prosperity and righteousness. We offer this petition to you, Lord, for you are worshiped and glorified throughout the ages. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. I have presentations to make, and I'm going to start with Commissioner Terrapini. Commissioner Terrapini, I'd like to present you with your... Commissioner Terrapini served six years before, so he has everything else, so that's all.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Commissioner Donovan. The youngest member of the commission would like to present you the key of the city. Patches. Your name tag. In a pin. Also, you have the real key of the city hall. Welcome.
Are there any commission comments on this item?
Commissioner Carr? Yeah, I'll take this opportunity first to, Mayor, congratulations on your victory as mayor. Really enjoyed serving the past two years with you. Looking forward to serving this next year with you, and hopefully the two more after that as well. I know you've done a lot of great things for the city before, when you were a city commissioner, and then you've done a lot of great things for the city as a mayor as well. And you've really looked out for the citizens as a whole, no matter what age group they're in, if they're young children in the recreation area, or if it's seniors. For the senior, I forget the, Senior Information Center that you've done, and you've really stuck to all of your promises when you ran your first campaign. And I'm really excited to serve with you, continuing on the board here, on the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Terrapini, it's an honor to serve with you now. I know we grew up together, only a few doors away from each other. Again, another individual we played baseball with. Really, it was, it's just an honor to finally be able to serve together. We've always, we've always served in different capacities in the city, from different boards, and obviously you're on the commission before I was. And I really appreciate your friendship, and I'm really looking forward to all the different things that we're going to be doing together here on the board, moving forward. And I really think it says a lot that you ran unopposed as a commissioner, and about what the community feels, and their confidence in you too, as well. And then Commissioner Donovan, it's again a privilege to serve with you. We've gone to church with each other for many, many years. Our families have known each other for many years as well. Again, it's an honor for you to be here, something for you to be very proud of as the youngest commissioner ever in the Tarpon Springs. I would venture to say probably the youngest commissioner in Pinellas County, and probably also one of the youngest ones in the state of Florida, as well. So I believe we've got a lot of great things that we could do over the next few years. It's great to see a new perspective, and you've worked your tail off, so great job on your, on your campaign. You had a really tough candidate who was very experienced and very seasoned, so you should be proud of yourself in everything that you've done. The residents have spoken. They've decided to put you all three in office, so thank you very much for deciding to run and serve this great town that we all live in, and looking forward to serving with you all. Thank you.
Mr. Seaver? Yes. First, I want to congratulate you, Mayor, and I appreciate that, all that you have done, as Commissioner Carr has said, and everything that we're continuing to work on, because I know we have a lot of projects and a lot of things we want to continue to work on, and I'm looking forward to that, and I'm looking forward to working with you. So again, congratulations, and maybe we can go to Greece again sometime. It's not scandalous, like David said. It was very interesting and very informative, so maybe this board can go too. So again, congratulations. Commissioner Terrapini, I sat right next to you my first three years, and here we are again. So I appreciate your institutional knowledge and your time serving before, and graduate you on being reelected, and I feel that being back on the board, we're gonna, sorry, we're gonna be able to move forward and accomplish a lot, so I'm very happy that you're here with us, and that I'll be serving with you again. So, thank you. And Connor, Commissioner Donovan, you've worked very hard, and I know we've spoken, and I know your father, because he's president of the Rotary Club, and which I'm part of, and I know that you've continued to work hard since you were elected. I appreciate that you're meeting with the department heads, and that you're getting to know the staff. I think it's very important to know, and you already know the staff, Townsend, it's very important to know the staff, and, and they appreciate getting to know you too. So keep on doing that. Also, I know that you're wanting to serve on some boards, and I appreciate your being so hardworking, and, and moving forward, and being proactive, and I look forward to having a different perspective on this board. So I appreciate you having, being here, and congratulations again.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone, for, for being here tonight. It's hard for me to believe that two years ago, I was sitting here giving a long-winded farewell speech, because that didn't last too long, so I'm glad to be back here. I want to keep it relatively brief, but I want to thank my growing family for all their love and support. Certainly couldn't do it without each and every one of you. I want to thank the community and my friends and constituents for your undoubted, unwavering support in me, and my beliefs, and what I think is best for the community as a whole. I will continue to try and, you know, do good things for the town and move us forward into the next decade. I definitely want to thank, excuse me, I want to thank Commissioner Kika for her nine years of service. I want to thank the Vice Mayor Banther for his friendship, his service to this community, and all the good things that he accomplished. I'm really looking forward to getting back on the board and getting back active within the community. I want to congratulate Commissioner Donovan for certainly a hard-fought campaign. He's now the youngest commissioner ever elected to the city of Tarpon Springs. My dad was, and me, and now Connor. So congratulations, Connor, I'm very proud of you. You have a lot to be, a lot to be proud of yourself. So congratulations to you, Mayor. You ran a hard-fought campaign, and looking forward to serving with you again. So here I am, thanks, everybody. Glad to be back.
Yeah, thank you all so much for being here tonight. I'm just so grateful for this opportunity to serve. I'm so thankful that the election went the way that it did, but I couldn't have done it without my supporters, my family, my friends, and now I'm just excited to get to work. I was actually pleased to see that we got a regular meeting tonight, so it can start right now. But thank you all again so much. I couldn't be more thankful.
Thank you. I am very happy to continue with my fellow commissioners, Reis Seaver and Jacob Carr, together to welcome Commissioner Terrapini and Commissioner Donovan to the commission. Commissioner Terrapini brings with him a great deal of experience. He already served six years as the commissioner, so he brings a great experience here into the, to the board. But also like to congratulate Commissioner Donovan, who ran a strong campaign. You proved that you were a hard worker, and it's refreshing to see a young generation committed to public service. That you exemplified in the, that commitment. I am encouraged about the strength of our commission and the diversity that we have here on this commission. I think, working all of us together, we're going to be very good servants to the city of Tarpon Springs. Again, I want to thank you all for being here tonight. With that, I'd like to go to the public comments. Is there any public comments on this item? I hear none. Well, thank you. We also can go to public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. This is something that we do in every meeting, being that this is a separate meeting, we asking if anybody has any, any comments that not related, that it's not part of the agenda. Please come forward to the podium. Over here, none? Thank you. Since we have a full agenda, we'll take a 10-minute break to allow everyone to leave and to go different places before the restaurants are closed tonight, but we have a very healthy agenda that we need to work on, so we'll come back in 10 minutes. Thank you.
How are you? I'm good. It's been great to work with him. He's gonna say good things. So, there's a couple more rotary things, you know, balls out there. I'm missing you, I mean, obviously, we see Paul, you know, he's done a great job for Rotary, but I'm sure he'll be glad when June 30th comes around, June 1st or whenever it is, you know. He's done a great job, and it's a thankless job, and obviously, I've done it, so he's done a good job. Go to dinner and celebrate.
Are you having fun yet?
No.
Huh?
No.
Applewood's strong. You just give me a script. Sorry, I haven't got a chance to come say hello to you, man.
How are you doing?
I'm doing good. I'm glad that you're our city attorney now.
Well, thank you, I'm glad to be here, and I'm glad you're back too.
Thanks.
It'll be interesting to see how things go now with the different makeup up here. I think it's gonna be great. Doing it for a second.
Yes, I hope so. It was always good in the past, so hopefully, try and do what we need to do to make it good again. Not that it's not good now, you know.
So I heard that your mom just decided that she was going to resign from the heritage preservation board.
Yeah, she did. She already did.
Why's that? She was chairman of the board.
I know, but being that I'm on the commission, it's no different than if one of them was on the planning of anything.
Well, yeah, it is. Okay.
We don't want anybody to say anything at any time or have any reason to.
Okay, so you're doing it as a precursor for somebody making a challenge on something?
On anything, on anything.
Okay, I got you.
I mean, not to mention, I mean, it's just.
You know, because you're a city under 35,000, though, that unless she's on a board that is, you know, zoning, she can still be on the board, but you're, but she's resigning as a result of an appearance of conflict, and not necessarily a conflict.
Right, yeah, okay. It's the safest bet for us. People, you know, people, where do you sound like you're going to talk? You've been here a long time, and people talk just, you know what I mean, so why give them?
Why give them something to talk about?
That's really smart. Yeah, well, we try and look at them like, yeah, it's really smart. I mean, if it was, you know, she wasn't put on the table, maybe it's a little bit different story, but I mean, it's a voluntary position to begin with. It's not like it's, you know, something that's gonna negatively impact her life by not being on that board.
She's busy enough, I see her everywhere.
Right, exactly.
She's testifying on Madeira Beach, she's testifying in Zaniden, you know, yeah, I see her all over the place. Yeah, she does a good job.
There's no reason to get there from the same, but I appreciate you bringing that.
So, it looks like it's gonna be a long meeting. You got two qua, you got two quasi-judicial hearings. This conditional use is quasi-judicial, and this site plan is quasi-judicial, just so that you know, so we're gonna have to have those two, people testifying, all that kind of stuff, so, but the rest of them are purely legislative, so anyhow, those two may slow down, I don't know.
Look forward to working with them.
Thank you, two thousand. Yeah, maybe I should have signed it before I passed it down to everybody, because I read it and then I passed it, so, okay. And I've signed these already, so I'll give you those. Yeah, we haven't, you know, eventually, tonight, if you want to sign them ahead of time, that's fine, it's up to you. Okay.
How you doing? I'm Townsend, Terrapini.
Oh, nice, awesome. How are you?
You said Jeff?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't. Maybe you can find them anywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, right? Well, we appreciate the help. Good. You live in Tarpon?
No, I live two blocks from here.
Yep, two more. Well, you know, actually, these are ordinances, you can do it at second reading. Okay, yeah, so we'll hold off on those two. Those are first readings tonight.
In the know. Keep us covered. Yeah. Awesome.
He was, he was wanting to get started, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to have the coverage.
So how long is your practice, and how long are you gonna partner in your practice?
Um, 1994. And I've been the managing partner since 1998, something like that. Long time. I'm dating myself by now, okay?
Something to be proud of there, a lot of work.
Thank you. This has already been falling out. This fell out when it did. I gotta figure out the best way to maximize my speed.
He was late.
Thank you. Hey Connor, you wanna use that box? Would that be easier for you?
We reconvene the BOC meeting at 8:00 or 6:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is the proclamation, Volunteer Week. I'll read the proclamation. The city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, proclamation, whereas the mayor and commissioners are grateful to volunteers for their time, passion and energy, and talented volunteering to make Tarpon Springs a great place to live, work and play. And whereas volunteers enhance the quality of life in Tarpon Springs by volunteering for the city advisory board, schools, places of worship, hospitals, youth groups, and with other organizations that benefit our community. And whereas the mayor and commissioners recognize the unique contributions made by volunteers, and whereas it is fitting to honor the many individuals who let their time, skill and effort in making our community a better place. And whereas National Volunteer Week is more than 40 years tradition enacted in 1974 by President Nixon, that designates a special time to recognize and celebrate the contributions of volunteers. Now therefore, I, Chris Alahousses, by virtue of the authority vested in me, as the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of April 7th through 13, 2019, as the National Volunteer Week, and I'd like to ask the volunteers of the Senior Information Center, Reverend Murphy, Pat, Donna. If you can accept, if you receive the proclamation, and, and if you say a few words. Thank you, Reverend. No, no, actually, one second. As soon as we take a picture, you have to go to the podium, so they can be recorded.
Much of the credit for bringing volunteers together, and particularly for the Senior Information Center, does belong to our mayor, Mayor Alahousses. I think the center's been in existence now for about two years, and it's an example of what volunteers can do. What happens when people who care about the community, young people, old people, people of different races, cultures, backgrounds, what happens when they come together to do something that's worth doing? Is that a good example? To really make a difference in the world? So much does depend on what people do voluntarily, whether it's voting, or just caring for others in the right sort of way. So as one of Tarpon's volunteers, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to be of service to this community, and I want to recognize all of the volunteers who are with us. I don't know all of them, but I just want to say thank you. Donna, and Pat, and all of you, you're very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Murphy, I want to thank you, and I would like to thank the, the team, all the volunteers of the Senior Information Center, daily, they providing information to, not only to seniors, but everyone that is asking for information on services and benefits that are available to them. But also, I like, I'm very grateful to the volunteers that are serving on advisory boards, and the volunteers that providing their services to every department that we have, without the volunteers who would not have been able to provide all the services that we have. Thank you. Commissioner Seaver, any comments?
No, thank you, I do appreciate all the volunteers. Not only you guys with the Information Center, but the people who volunteer in our community garden, Tarpon Springs Merchants Association. So many people don't realize how many volunteers we have that do so much for our community, and without them, a lot of these things wouldn't be happening, so thank you for your service.
Commissioner Carr?
No comments? Thank you for all the volunteers.
Any comments?
Yeah, hate to sound redundant, but you guys really are the gears for our city, and without volunteers, you know, we wouldn't be up here, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, thank you, we go to the item number two, which is the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Commissioner Carr?
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, proclamation, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that requires police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and prevention of, preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link to our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunications contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, fire suppression, and treatment of patients. Now therefore, I, Commissioner Jacob Carr, by the virtue of the authority vested, the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through 20th, 2019, be recognized by the city of Tarpon Springs as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. This is gonna be received by Major Young, and also Mr. Greg Clark, who's a communication dispatcher at the Police Department.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate your service.
Thank you, commissioners, for this proclamation, it's very much appreciated. I accept this on the behalf of the other four dispatchers. It is a pleasure working for the city of Tarpon Springs. I've been here almost eight years. It's a great family life. We have great residents, and I couldn't do it without the great support of our officers and our administrative staff. Anything that we ask for, to do our job, they're right there for us, and again, we can't do it without them. You guys have our back as well. We've worked with you in the EOC, it was a pleasure. Thank you very much for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
I just want to say that they are a tremendous, integral part of our team at the Tarpon Springs Police Department, and they're unsung heroes, because most people don't ever get to see them, but they're usually the first one they're calling and talking to on the phone, and keeping people calm, and getting all the information out there to our officers, as well as paramedics and firefighters that are responding to 911 calls. And we're a secondary PSEP, and this goes for all the telecommunications down at the E911 Center down at Central. I appreciate everything they do on a daily basis for all of us.
Now, they're obviously a vital link to everything that we do, and PSEP stands for Public Safety Answering Point. So we have our own, we have great technology, this commission's been supporting us all along, but, you know, the frontline folks, they're what, they're what gets it done, and Greg, you know, to you and your unit, you guys are just awesome. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your service. Again, thank you for your service. Any Commission comments?
I just want to say thank you to your leadership, Chief, and Major Young, because you are the leaders and bring everything up to date for us. And I don't want to forget my buddies back there, the firefighters, who are our first responders and deserve credit too, so thank you.
Any public comments on this item? Here now, thank you. We go to the item number three, which is Tourism Marketing Program Update. Karen Lemons will do the presentation. Right, Mr. Leck?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager. I'm really pleased and excited to be here today to present this multimedia tourism marketing campaign, and especially a good opportunity, we have a new board, and we're going to have a new marketing campaign, and an exciting new year ahead. I want to thank you, the campaign would not have been made possible without the additional funding that the Board of Commissioners provided to us in this current budget, and also without the expertise of a core group of people that put this together, led by Diane Wood, our cultural and civic services director, Kelly Reidy, our operations manager for Tarpon Arts, Judy Staley, our information and research officer, and we had a lot of people throughout the city that we worked with to give us ideas and suggestions, and bounced ideas off of. So thank you to all of them, especially to Kelly, who really took the lead and brought everything together. So with that, I'd like to start with giving you a little background of what we were already doing. These are our tactics currently in place, and we're going to continue to do these along with the new ones. We have our city brochures, I think you've all seen these, and we print about a hundred thousand of them a year, and they're in all the Florida Welcome Centers, they're in about twelve hundred locations throughout the state, and the triple-A centers. Our monthly newspaper inserts, these are the four-page inserts that are in the Sunday Tampa Bay Times, the last Sunday of the month, they list all the city ads and the events that are going on in the city. We also have an ad in the Sun Coast Attractions map. This is a Florida statewide map that's in all the tourist locations throughout the state with about a million copies printed annually. And then this past year, you know, we got the number one historic small town, Best in the USA Award. So we took an ad out in the USA Today Gulf Coast Travel Magazine that was printed alongside the USA Today's, and provided an opportunity for us to get some exposure that way. On the left is a copy of the insert, that's in the Sunday Times newspaper, and on the right is the ad that we placed in USA Today. And additional marketing tactics that we're using, the Event Rack cards, this is a partnership with the Merchants Association, I think you've all seen these, they're pretty flooded throughout the city, gives all the events, and it's been widely distributed locally here. The Gulf to Bay Magazine, this is the St. Pete Clearwater C V B's premier destination magazine. We place an ad in that every year, it's distributed, almost a million copies are distributed, and this goes to key markets throughout the country, New York City, Boston, Atlanta, Philadelphia, Indianapolis. They're also inserted into newspapers throughout the region in Florida, so we get a good reach for this. And then Wear Magazine, this is an in-room magazine that is put into all of the hotels in Pinellas and Hillsborough County. We took an ad out in there, almost a million and six visitors get that when they stay at the hotels here. And then we have signage at St. Pete Clearwater Airport, we have a billboard in the baggage claim area, and then we also now have digital ads in the baggage carousels, five of them. That's the Wear Magazine, and on the right is the Gulf to Bay Magazine ad. And here's what the billboard looks like at the airport, and then these digital ads that are on each of the five baggage carousels. So, with that said, we are now taking everything to a new level, we've developed a new logo, a new branding, Explore Tarpon Springs, exploretarponsprings.com, you're going to be seeing that everywhere. It's very robust, we love the design that was done in-house. If you look at each of the letters, there's a picture of something in Tarpon Springs. And the beauty of this is, as we move forward, we'll be able to keep that brand and keep that logo, but it interchanges pictures, so we can put fresh new pictures in all the time. So we're focusing in three areas, local tourism, so the staycations and people who are nearby, regional tourism, which is on a tank full, we're calling it, people who are within a tank full of gas of the city, and then statewide, those who are staying in Orlando and other areas. So tomorrow, we're debuting a photo contest. We thought, what better way to start the campaign, generate community support, and generate some buzz for our new campaign, to have a photo contest. We're in great need of new, fresh photos that we can use throughout the campaign, not only for our website, for our marketing activities, all of our collateral, get people an opportunity to come to the city and take great pictures, and our ability to use them moving forward. So that's going to start tomorrow, it'll be running through June first. We're promoting it with all of our partners, winners will be selected, and then we're going to have a display at the Heritage Museum. And then a new website, we're really, really, super excited about this. For years, we've been looking for kind of a one, single source of information that can provide tourism activities in the city, and this is going to be it. We've got a little look-see at what it's going to be, it's exciting, it's integrative, it's fresh, it's going to have lots of pictures on it. We've got an event calendar, so we'll have events from the merchants, the city, the chamber, all of our recreation events, and a business directory. So all of our local businesses can be listed on here, whether they're a chamber member or a merchant member, with their logo, and an opportunity to have about a fifty-word description of what they do. And then a day in Tarpon Springs, this will be a series of small, little, short stories on which you can do when you get here, whether you're looking for culture, or recreation, or arts, or the sponge docks, brew pubs, it's going to tell you what you can do when you get here. And then news and updates, and a blog. So we're really excited about this site, and hoping to take that to another level. And then billboards, we've had a lot of business people asking us for some billboards, so we're going to deliver those. And we're going to have two of them, one on I four, and one on I two-seventy-five, that's going to say the Explore Tarpon Springs, and again, with the digital ad, we can remove the pictures and put in new pictures as we get them. And then the tag is just thirteen miles north of Clearwater. We had, visited St. Pete Clearwater at one of our T D C meetings recently, and they told us that the number one source of travelers coming into the Clearwater Beach area is from Orlando. So this is going to help remind them that we have a great place here to visit. The locations are north on I seventy-five, where it splits off, and then north on, near Lakeland on I four. And then we have a series of advertorials that actually launched March thirty-first, but these are, advertorials are paid ads that look like newspaper stories. We're going to have a series of six of them, focusing on different topics in the city, focusing on the regions from Hernando Citrus County all the way down to South Tampa. Those will be on the front page of the Market Link section of the Sunday Tampa Bay Times And this is the one that appeared on March thirty-first, I don't know if any of you saw it, but it was a very nice ad, and the others will look similar to this. And then on a tank full, this is our effort to expand and widen our regional approach, looking at what you can do on a tank full of gas, come to Tarpon Springs, spend the day. This is a sample of one of the ads that we are running this week. We're promoting this within the Tampa Bay area, markets from Central and East Pasco, Hillsborough, Northwest Hillsborough, East Hillsborough, down to Riverview and Apollo Beach, and all the way up, as you can see on the map, north of Spring Hill. So this is the reach that we're getting, and the penetration that we're getting from both the advertorials and the on-a-tank-full marketing. Then digital ads, you see digital ads everywhere, we're working with the Tampa Bay Times, you see the Explore Tarpon Springs banner ad when you get to the Times website. And then they use a strategy called geo-fencing, so whenever you go to certain websites, say you go to ESPN a lot, or you like to go to Home and Garden TV, when you go to those sites, you're going to see the Explore Tarpon Springs banner come up again. And we're going to get a lot of impressions on this, and just another reminder about Tarpon Springs and getting that brand out there. And then the Jolly Trolley, we're going to be placing some ads inside and outside of the Jolly Trolley, it now runs seven days a week, as you know, from Clearwater Beach to Tarpon Springs. And in addition to the ads, we're having custom banners made. Whenever the Jolly Trolley is chartered, we have the ability to put banners on the side of it. So when the Merchants Association, for example, does the wine walks, we'll be able to have custom banners on both sides, talking about Explore Tarpon Springs. And as you know, it's a five-hour wine walk, and it's constantly traveling between the sponge docks and downtown, so that's going to give us a good impression upon people that may decide to join the wine walk the next time. And then a promotional video. One of the perks from our membership with Visit Florida is to take advantage of their co-op programs, and we'll be working with Miles Media, which is the media firm that does all of the Visit Tampa Bay destination marketing and filming. And they're going to be here at the end of the month, filming a ninety-second promotional video for us. This will be ours, we will own it, we can use it on our website, on social media, commercials, we can take it and kind of carve it up and use it for different types of commercials, and then use it as an economic development marketing tool, as we're working to attract businesses here. And then our tourism directories, we're already a member of Visit Florida and Visit St. Pete Clearwater, we took the opportunity to update our web listing and make it more attractive, and as part of this campaign, we also now are a member of Visit Tampa Bay, which is Hillsborough's marketing firm. So we're working now with the Merchants Association and the Chamber of Commerce to encourage our businesses to get involved. As part of our membership, the businesses get a free web listing on these sites, and many of our businesses don't have that. So we put together a two-page flyer that's titled Five Simple and Free Things That You Can Do Right Now To Increase Your Business Visibility, which is going to the Visit Florida site, the Visit St. Pete site, obviously, working with them with Google, and claiming their Facebook listings, and then working to develop our directory on our Explore Tarpon Springs website. We've had a couple of our Tourism Development Council meetings that have focused on getting our businesses involved to get more visibility for them through these sites. And then finally, some public art opportunities. We believe that the logo really lends itself nice to a mural that could be on the side of a building, so we took the opportunity to Photoshop it on the side of the Macris Building, which is on Alt nineteen and Tarpon Avenue, it looks very nice there. So looking at different ways that we can use the logo to spread it around the community. And with that, again, we're really excited about the new campaign, can't thank the board enough for allocating the funding, we wouldn't have been able to do this without that, and without the expertise of our cultural and civic services department, they really have a lot of talent, and this was really a citywide effort, because we worked with a lot of the people within the city to develop this. So we're very happy about it, we're anxious to get started, and we're anxious to see where it takes us. So with that, if you have any questions?
Ms. Lemmons, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the update. We all know that tourism is the main industry of Tarpon Springs, and marketing is very important to our local economy, to our local businesses. There are a couple of things that I had questions on, I think you answered most of them, but the ninety-second video that you were referring to, is that going to, will be able to broadcast it at different TV channels?
Yes. Yeah, we can create a commercial out of it if we would like to, and we can place it on television, on cable, yes.
You mean that it's ninety seconds, do you think it might be too long? Is there any way we can make it shorter?
Well, we would have to edit it.
The only one, I think it's thirty seconds?
Yes.
At the TV stations, right? So you'd be able to cut it down?
Yes.
Good, thank you. And I'm also glad that you are involved in the Chamber of Commerce and the Merchants Association to be part of this effort, and I think we all have the same goal, and we need to work together. Thank you. Commissioner Seaver, I know you're very interested with that.
Well, yes, I've been asking for more marketing dollars before I even became a commissioner, when I was president of the Merchants Association, because I felt that our businesses really needed more, and we are a tourist, obviously, community. I attended that T D C meeting last month, when Visit St. Pete Clearwater and Visit Florida were there, and it was invaluable to the business owners that were there, because, sorry, I keep losing my voice, because of what they can do now to advertise their businesses with that last page that you showed. So hopefully, we'll have a lot of business owners taking advantage of that, and using, you know, Visit Florida and Visit St. Pete Clearwater to help them with their businesses and advertise their businesses. I like the new logo, I think it's very nice, and the website, I'm really excited about, because now you can go to one site where everybody's incorporated all together to see what's going on in Tarpon Springs, so I'm excited, I can't wait to have this going out, I know you've already started on it, and photo contests, I hope everybody participates in, all our business owners, and thank you very much. And I have to thank Diane Wood and Kelly, when we hired Kelly, I emphasized the mark, let's make sure that you do the whole city, not just cultural services, because I appreciate cultural services, but we haven't had somebody just mark at Tarpon Springs. So thank you for your work, and thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Mayor. Karen, thank you for this presentation. Kelly, Diane, thank you so much for your hard work with this project, and all the projects that you're doing for the marketing of Tarpon Springs. The residents really are the lifeblood of Tarpon Springs, but the next part is the small businesses. If we don't have the small businesses, and as a city, support small businesses, and partnering with the Merchants Association, and also the Chamber, thank you all for your service. We really need to work together and promote the small businesses, so I'm proud that the commission came together last budget year, and was able to allocate the thirty thousand dollars. Based on everything you showed me, I think the city's getting a lot for their money, and a big bang for their buck that they're spending, so thank you so much for the presentation. I'm excited to see all these new aspects, and to continue to see the growth in the tourism in Tarpon Springs. Karen, I've got a question, how do we measure tourism in Tarpon Springs? If it's a good year, a bad year, we had more visitors, we had less visitors, is there a way to measure that?
We're going to be having some new analytics based on this campaign, but currently, Visit St. Pete Clearwater does have some information on visitors that come into Clearwater Beach, and the percentage of them that come here to Tarpon Springs. Other than that, we've been using, when we had our economic impact study, they took a survey of daytime visitors, overnight visitors, and people who are here, and as you know, they determined a million visitors a year come to the city. A lot of it is word of mouth, with the businesses, they tell us if they had a good, you know, a good year, a bad year, sometimes you get a lot of visitors, but they're not spending, so that changes. But we're going to have some better analytics with, through this campaign, and then, like I said, Visit St. Pete Clearwater does have some, and it's roughly about ten percent of the visitors that come into Clearwater Beach come up to Tarpon Springs, because we're one of their five destinations, because obviously of the sponge docks and the Greek heritage here.
Great. I'm excited to see the analytics after this year, and kind of see where the pings happen on the websites and so on, so that's going to be pretty interesting to see. Is there any attempt to market towards certain businesses, or is this obviously just tourism that we're looking at, right?
This is tourism, and then working with the businesses to let them know and educate them on the free resources that they have to get on these visitor websites.
Okay. Kelly and Diane, thanks again for your work on this, and Karen, thank you.
Commissioner Tarpon?
Thank you. I want to thank the committee for your hard work in this, I want to applaud the commission for recognizing that we needed more money in our budget geared towards this marketing campaign, so thank you all for having the foresight to do that, and give the staff some of the tools that they needed to proceed. It looks, to echo Commissioner Carr's comment, it looks like we are getting quite a big bang for our buck, as it relates to how you spent the money. I do have a question, as far as the billboard contracts go, you know what the timeframe is on how long those billboards are going to be ours, so to speak?
Yeah, they'll be up in May, and I believe they run through August.
May to August?
Mm-hmm. So they're covering the summer months.
Did we happen to look at any availability or cost during the season, or during the Or during the, whatever we interpret the season to be?
Well, we looked at, we wanted to get them up during the summertime right now. We didn't have this ready for this season. We can look at that for next season. What we were looking at now is getting through the summertime. There are more visitors that are coming now in the summertime and that's our downtime. So we thought this would be a boost for them. But we'll look at next season and see what those prices are.
What's the cost on one of the billboards?
The billboard is about $8,000.
A piece?
No, total.
Oh, total. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much again for putting this presentation together. You guys worked really hard on it and it shows. I think this is fantastic, not only for tourism, but for our local businesses. My one question, though, is that the new website, the sample you showed up there, it looks great. Does it link back to our city website, like the City Hall website?
Yeah, they'll link together. But we wanted something that would be fresh and new and so it'll go there. But we'll have links to other sites that'll be on there, yes.
Awesome. Then I think that's just something maybe we should put on our radar, is maybe looking into redoing our city website. While we're getting this fresh, new tourism website out there, it might be worth looking at our current website because somebody will have that fresh, bright, you know, low amount of clicks to where you're going. And then they'll click on the link to our City Hall website and it'll be, you know, night and day. So I think that's maybe something good we should put on our radar that we could maybe do in conjunction with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lim, again, I want to thank you for your work. I also want to thank Diane Wood and your team for the excellent work that you do. Appreciate that. We are now going to the public comments of this item. Any public comments? There is none. Thank you very much. We are now going to the ordinance of resolutions, item number four. Resolution 2018-09, election of vice mayor. Before I ask the city attorney to read the resolution, I guess we need to vote on it.
Yes, you need to determine who the vice mayor is going to be so that we can add it to the resolution as I read it.
Well, to select the new vice mayor is a very difficult decision to make. It is difficult because here in Tarpon Springs, we have four commissioners that are very good servants and they love to serve the people of Tarpon Springs. And every one of them can be a good vice mayor. But tonight, my friends, we're here to select the commissioner who has the most qualifications as the vice mayor. To continue the cooperation and the good work that we've done the last three years is important to have a continuity. To choose a vice mayor who has, who is eligible to serve all three years and not to step down due to the term limits. Also someone who already has the experience and served as the vice mayor. As a promise to the people of Tarpon Springs that are always going to be available to serve them, the vice mayor also should be available to serve the people of Tarpon Springs. Again, as I said, all four commissioners are very good commissioners. They can be vice mayor. But only one person I believe that he has these qualities. And I believe this is Commissioner Terrapin. And enthusiastically, I encourage that motion to be made to nominate him as the vice mayor. And the chair will contain a motion.
I'm wishing to approve.
Second? Do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Commission comments, please. Any commission comments? Any commission comment? Commissioner Seber?
Yes, thank you. I've, first of all, it's tradition to have the senior commissioner move on to the vice mayor. It's very rare that that does not happen. I think it's only happened one time in many years. So obviously, I'm very disappointed. I'm committed to the city. It's apparent that I've always been involved even before I became commissioner, as president of the Merchants Association and other organizations that I belong to. And I will continue to do that, obviously. But I'm a strong advocate for businesses and just am always involved and interested in doing what's best for Tarpon Springs. So for me, it's a disappointment. I don't know if it's a political or personal move, but I just wanted to say what I felt.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'll just say, Mayor, that I'm appreciative of the nomination and the appointment. Certainly was not expecting it, but I will gladly take it to the commission's decision. Thank you.
Are there any public comments of this item? Are there any public comments of this item? Here none? The chair will contain, we already have a motion, so roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapin?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
No.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is number five.
We need to read the resolution, Mayor. I need to go ahead and read that resolution. So I'll read Resolution 2019-09 by title only. "A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Appointing Commissioner Townsend Terrapin, Vice Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs and Providing For An Effective Date Hereof." That was a reading of Resolution 2019-09 by title only. Do you need a motion?
We already have a motion?
No, you need a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve? Need a motion to approve the year resolution? You already have that?
Same motion that we've already approved it? Motion to approve resolution with Townsend Terrapin as vice mayor.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
No.
Vice Mayor Terrapin?
Yes.
Commissioner LaHoozus? Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We're now going to the item number five, which is the Resolution 2019-07. This is the application 18-109, Secadia Cemetery. This is the condition used quasi-judicial. The city attorney will read the title and will explain the quasi-judicial process. And item number five and number six are quasi, so the same instructions goes on board.
That's correct. Thank you. Resolution 2019-07, "A Resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Approving Application Number 18-109, Requesting Conditional Use Permit and Associated Site Plan to Allow For Expansion", let me get this right. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. "For expansion of the existing Secadia Cemetery, Including Construction Of A 1,025-Square-Foot Committal Shelter And A 6,351-Square-Foot Mausoleum On 3.391-Akers Of Land Located At 1201 East Tarpon Avenue In The Residential Office RO Zoning District, Providing For Findings, Providing For Conditions, And Providing For An Effective Date." As for the quasi-judicial procedures for items five and six on the agenda, it's going to be the same. I'm going to read it once. "This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a judicial, in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the Board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the Board is required to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The Board may only consider the evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the Board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to find against the applicant. Now is the time for any commissioner to disclose any expedited communications or otherwise address any conflict of interest. Are there any expedited communications? Seeing none, are there any conflicts of interest that need to be addressed? Okay. So at this point, I'd like to swear in. All witnesses are going to testify in this matter. Raise your hand. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Staff, presentation?
Thank you. Heather Earler, Planning and Zoning Director, and staff to this application. I have with me tonight also the Public Services Director, Paul Smith, who will also be presenting on behalf of this application. Again, this application is for an expansion of the existing cemetery on an adjacent piece of property across of Jasmine Avenue. It consists of 3.39 acres. What is being sought here is to provide for the right to use this property, which is right now considered residential office use. However, it's vacant for cemetery use, including a committal shelter, a mausoleum, and in-ground burials. The property is located at the southwest corner and was previously occupied by a barber shop, but is otherwise vacant. It's adjacent to the existing sports complex and also to the Rose Hill Cemetery. Pursuant to Section 209.02, review standards for conditional use of the Tarpon Springs Land Development Code, no conditional use shall be recommended for approval or receive a final action for approval unless positive findings based on the substantial competent evidence either presented at public hearing or held by the Board or reviewed personally by the Board members is made for each of the following standards. And I'm going to go through the analysis for each of these standards. First one, conformance of the requirements of the Land Development Code. The proposed use is subject to conditional use review in the RO zoning district. The proposed design complies with the standards of the RO district and the other requirements of the Land Development Code. The use to which the property may be put is appropriate to the property in question and is compatible with the existing and planned land uses in the area. Since it's adjacent to two cemeteries and to other city institutionally-used property as a park, the staff has deemed it to be consistent and compatible with the existing and planned land uses in the area. The condition use is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of all elements of the comprehensive plan. Again, the conditional use is consistent with the comp plan and all of the goals, objectives, and policies. The conditional use will not result in significant adverse impacts to the environment or historic resources. And the use will not result in any significant impact to the property. There is a Cypress wetland that is being protected with a 25-foot wetland setback. So we don't anticipate any other issues with it because of the significant setback that's being provided. The conditional use will not adversely impact adjoining property values. The proposed use in this area, you have a majority of the properties that are already committed for cemetery use, so we don't anticipate any impact on property values. The conditional use will not adversely impact nor will it exceed the capacity of the fiscal ability of the city to provide available public facilities, including transportation, water, sewer, solid waste drainage, recreation, education, fire protection, library services, other similar public facilities. Based on the type of use that we're looking at, there is minimal amount of actual public facilities that are going to be utilized for this particular project, so there is limited impact here. The conditional use shall provide an efficient and orderly development considering the impact upon growth patterns and the cost of the city to provide public facilities. Again, there's no real proposed expansion of the utilities or any other proposed facilities. So as a result, there's no real impact to additional growth patterns in this particular area. And again, because of the fact that this is actually combined with a site plan, we're actually approving the site plan as well as part of this resolution. So it's not just the use, it's also the design for the project. And the site plan is meeting all of the criteria. All of the consistency for the Land Development Code has been met. The level of service analysis is consistent with the requirements of the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. In summary, the technical review team reviewed the project at their meeting on February 7, 2009, and recommended that the item be forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board. The minutes of that meeting are attached in your packet. The process for site plan review is set forth in Section 2.102, 1.0.03 of the Land Development and calls for the Planning and Zoning Board to review the site plan for compliance with the comprehensive plan and the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, including the city's concurrency management system and the city's building codes, and provide their written recommendations. That's been done. The Planning and Zoning Board found this application to be consistent with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan and therefore has moved it forward for approval by the Board of Commissioners. With that, staff is recommending approval of applications 1801 and 1809 under Resolution 200907, requesting conditional use and associated site plan approval to allow this expansion of the existing Secadia Cemetery, including the construction of a 1,025-square-foot committal shelter, a 6,351-square-foot mausoleum on 3.39 acres of land located at 1201 East Tarpon Avenue in the Residential Office Zoning District, and is approved with the following conditions. The mausoleum is approved as part of the conditional use in Resolution 200907 and must be constructed within five years of the effective date of Resolution 200907, consistent with Section 209.00 and 210 of the Land Development Code. Developers are responsible for acquiring all jurisdictional permits for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code. Construction plans shall be consistent with the site plan. All requisite fees attended to the project shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. All signups shall be submitted in separate permit and reviewed for compliance with the Land Development Code standards at that time. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Was any changes made from the time that we had the presentation by Mr. Smith?
That's an answer for my friend.
Good evening, Paul Smith, Public Services Director. The question was, have there been any changes made to the plans since my presentation? The plans have been put in more detail since my presentation. I presented to you a conceptual plan that showed the general routing of the traffic, how we were going to access the cemetery, the number of plots and that sort of thing. But yes, there's been some more detail developed since my discussion with you and that's been presented to the Planning and Zoning Board and the TRC as well.
Can you share some of those changes, just a few? I mean, can you cover some of those changes?
Yeah, the plans, the plan set was put together. It defines various things like the details of the elevations of the construction, the planting plans, what types of trees are going to be removed and which trees are going to be planted, along with other vegetation in compliance with the Land Development Code, the parking area layouts, the utilities, and those sorts of things.
Do you know if we have received any correspondence from the resident?
No, we have not.
Well, I believe these properties compatible with the existing area and I'm in support of it. Any commission comment?
We have to get the public to, this is time for questions.
Yes, a question.
Right, so because then we need to have the public go ahead and speak.
Yes, we're now getting questions from the, on this end.
Thank you. Heather, did we, do we pay our own application fees in a situation like this?
Excuse me, I missed that.
Do we pay our own application fees in a scenario like this?
Generally, we would do some type of transfer or we would waive those fees. It just depends on that thing. But those are generally the conditions that we put on all of our applications.
Sure. And my question, that question kind of stems from the public art ordinance. And I see that we're, per Land Development Code, whatever you've got written down here, where I guess we, the city, as the applicant, is exempt from the public art requirements, which I find interesting. So it says, "Per Land Development Code, Section 296, blah, blah, project not residential, commercial, industrial, or mixed use." So my next question would be, another example would be church or school would be exempt from the public art ordinance. Is that right?
Yeah, they are not classified as those types of developments. So they would, there is a section within that section of the Land Development Code that defines what commercial, industrial, and residential uses are. And none of those uses are included in that residential use. So either the criteria would need to be changed or the Board would direct staff to include a public art component for this project.
Sure. I just think that it's a little bit of a missed opportunity. I mean, it's such a nice project that we're able to provide, you know, to the citizens and something that's certainly in, I mean, demand, I hate to say it. But, you know, we need more, we need more plots. We need to provide that service to the residents. And I understand that it's a service, but we're also selling lots, right? So it's not like we're giving them away. So we're actually selling, you know, papers conveying, money's being transferred. So I mean, to me, it can kind of be construed as a commercial... So I mean, to me, it can kind of be construed as a commercial deal. So I think it's a little bit of a missed opportunity for us to not have some form of public art, whatever it may be, you know, on the site. That's just, you know, that's just my thoughts initially looking at this project. I think, you know, I don't think we need anything that's, I don't know, who knows? I mean, we'll leave that up to the artist if we decide to do something there, but I definitely think, you know, on a project of this scale, obviously, if it was a normal project, it would, it would, the aggregated job value would be over a million bucks. So I mean...
Certainly, since this is a public, this is a public project, since the Public Art Fee Fund is there, there's no reason why the Public Art Fund could not be used to fund a public art piece at that, at that facility. It certainly might not be required by code, but there's no reason that it can't be enhanced. Again, remember, your Land Development Code is the minimum standards. It's not meant to be that. So if you want to include that in the resolution, or if you want to direct staff to include that, as we move forward, we certainly can do that.
I think that, that's something, obviously, myself can't direct staff, but I think that that's something for the Commission to consider as we look at this project. You know, it's certainly going to be a high-profile project. I mean, my understanding is, public art can be shown through fencing, entrance feature, fountain, mosaic, whatever. But I just think that it's a pretty high-profile project for us, and it's certainly going to be a nice project, and I think that we should look into some form of public, public art here. I wouldn't suggest that we pay, the city pay into the Public Art Fund, but I think that we should certainly utilize this development or project to displace the public art. And that's, that's my questions for now, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I think you all received my email slash memo earlier today pertaining to some of the areas of the site plan. I just want to remind the Commission, this is also a conditional use plan, although it's the city as applicant, it's not a permitted use for this property. So as a conditional use plan, the, the board can ask additional items for the applicant to do, to fit the community, fit the area better. So I just want to, I'll, I'll bring up a couple of those items as we go on, but one of the things I do want to point out, and I did, this came to the Commission...
We asked this for questions right now, to the staff. Right now, we're asking questions to the staff. We'll come back later.
Okay.
Do you have any questions to the staff?
I'm trying to figure out how to unword this, Mayor. Karen, I'm sorry, Heather, just if you want to confirm what I said, this, since it's a conditional use, that's something that is typical, you'll see sometimes the board will ask additional items to be done, am I correct in that?
Agreed. The, you, conditional use is meant to be a request for answering the question, is it compatible? So if you feel that there are additional items that should be added to the request via conditions or changes to the plan, that's certainly something that can be done as part of this process.
Since there are questions, I also want to, Paul, the signs that are being used for the traffic signs, are those going to be like the black powder-coated ones that we see around the Historic District and other areas, or are those going to be the traditional plain metal ones?
Well, we have the lot marker signs, the circular ones shown in the plans. We're planning to match what's at the existing cemetery. Those do have a black color with the white label on them.
I guess, I mean, like stop sign, do not enter, it's a one-way route, right? So that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, I didn't have any specific plan for that, but that's something we could certainly do.
Yeah, I think as a city properties, as we move forward, for any city properties, it would be an area that we should look at as a city to make sure that we use the, the most classy sign available.
Just to clarify, that's the framed signs, right? The black frames?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're all clear.
Thanks for clarifying. I've got some other items, we'll talk on the...
We'll come back.
On the discussion side of things.
Commissioner Donovan, have a question?
I, I just had a question. I know we're selling these plots, but I did see the quote as far as how much it's going to cost to expand it. So my question for you guys is just if we have an estimate right now of how it's going to affect the operating cost moving forward.
Oh, that's a Paul question. See, that's why I brought you.
Thank you, Paul Smith, Public Services Director. We base it on the land ratio, so it's about 10% of the, of the current site that we have. So if you apply that to our annual operating budget, it's about $35,000 to $40,000 additional costs, we estimate with the expansion area.
Okay, a year?
Yes, per year.
Okay. And then also, on, on like the opening day of it, the unveiling, what's the view from the road going to be like, from Tarpon Avenue right there?
Well, I've driven by it several times, and, you know, it goes uphill before you get to the edge of the property, and then it's going to drop back down again. So I think, and I really want to see after it's been graded out, I think it's, it's tough to look at a piece of paper and really get a sense of what you're going to see there, but I think there'll be parts of the property where you'll be looking up at this peak and, and the road is down low enough that some of these may be screened out, which may include some of the noise reduction that goes with that, too. So the land pitches from about 27 feet elevation down to about 6 feet. So there's a 20-foot drop as you move to the northwest of the site, so quite a bit of topography there.
Okay. And then my last one was just construction that's going on. I know it's right by Discovery Field. I just wanted to know if there were any plans or, I guess, provisions in place to work with the Little League programs that are playing there, or maybe if it's going to affect parking or traffic at all, getting in and out, because right now, it's, I mean, construction would be right at like their hottest time of the year for those fields being used.
It's a great point. We're going to make the site work for itself, so to speak, so we're going to take care of that access first from the site so that we're not relying upon the drive aisles of the sports complex to, for construction.
Okay, thank you.
I had one other question. Yeah. Paul, was this, was there a sidewalk that we're going to be constructing from the entrance towards Discovery Cove, or Discovery Park?
This project includes a sidewalk from the corner of Tarpon Avenue to the entrance of the new cemetery and then into the cemetery. We don't have anything north of the cemetery in this project. That would need to be part of probably a larger project because there's wetlands just to the north that'll need to be dealt with to keep that access going, however far it's determined that you want it to go.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for public. Any public comment, if there's anyone that wants to speak? If you'd step forward, I'm going to go ahead and swear in. Is there anyone else other than former Mayor Protos that's going to speak tonight? I'd like to swear in everybody at the same time. Oh, this is the time. I'm going to go ahead and have you get sworn in, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. You swear that the testimony you're going to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, congratulations to the new board. Congratulations, Mayor Alahouzes. You'll be writing the next chapter with this board into the new century for Tarpon Springs. I'd like to know how long it's going to be before we can come, look at the plat, map, and start to buy plots. I know I want to buy for family, and I don't know how, is it going to take a year, two years? Do you have any idea how long it's going to take?
Yeah.
Paul Smith, yes, our schedule at this point, there's some things still that we need to go through the bidding process and get these bids in and, and just keep our fingers crossed, but we're looking at sometime around June of 2020, possibly June to August, so not that far away that construction could be done, and we can begin to tour the site with prospective customers. And we've got a little bit of work to do before then in terms of figuring out plot prices, rule updates, and those sorts of things, and, and those are the kinds of things you're talking about.
Okay, 2020, probably won't be here. Who knows? Only God knows. Don't laugh, Mark, because I'll come and get you, never mind.
He'll be here.
And, and I'm sure, I'm sure they're going to be considerably higher than what they were paying, but are we going to have in this plan accommodations for people who are cremated just to put the urns in? A wall just where you put in the urns? And are we going to have mausoleums in this? These are questions people are asking, you know.
Great questions. At this point, we've got columbariums still that have a lot of space left in the existing cemetery. We don't have any current columbarium shown in the plan. However, we do have some room on the site. Those are very flexible in how you can cite them, so that could be certainly a future thing. And yes, we do have mausoleum space set aside, Phase 2, to be very similar in design to the current building there.
Very good, thank you.
Any also would like to speak? Guess not, Mayor. So with that, Mayor, if the, the city wants to summarize, they'd have the opportunity to summarize since they are both the applicant and staff, and then we would close it for the board's consideration.
Staff has no additional comment, unless you have any questions.
I have one more question. I just want to follow up on the question that Mayor Protos had. Is that, can we have a waiting list where people can buy plots right now? That's a question that I got from people, too.
Yes, and it's something I'd like to work with the clerk on. We're great partners in the cemetery, and she's got a lot of experience with it. I think we're going to need to come up with some sort of system. I, I would like to consider some preneed, but I would recommend some sort of annual limit, sort of a lottery-type of thing, because I think we want to make this last. We've got 800 spaces, it sounds like a lot, it is, but if you sell, you know, 200 to 300 a year, you're going to be back to needing. So I really think there's a balance that we can strike that's reasonable, that gives people an opportunity, but also preserves that opportunity for people, you know, 10 years in the future.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just had a follow-up based on, on your comment, and then also something that Commissioner Carr said is now the appropriate time, Mr. Attorney. So as it relates to a wait list, I, I think, or not a wait list, but just a reserve, reservation list, I don't think that that would be appropriate to do until at least you have some idea of pricing, right? I mean, a lot of times people want to, they want to be on a wait list for apartments, or they want to be on a wait list for, you know, a storefront that we're renovating or something like that, but until you get done with the, or until you know what the price is, you know, they may be on a wait list for something that is out of their price point, you know? So I think it's wise to, to get a little bit further along in the process, especially as it relates to pricing, before we start a, a reservation list. And I think you're right, Paul, and smart that in the sense that we should only allow X amount of lots to be bought a year, or, you know, even years, odd years, unless there's an immediate demand, and we can maybe spell some of those demand items out. And then Commissioner Carr, or I think Commissioner Donovan, had a point about sidewalks. Mr. Smith responded with the wetland on Jasmine Boulevard in terms of the external sidewalk, but my recollection from when I was on the board before is that there was kind of an internal system, or access from the cemetery to the sports park, and I just looked at the plans, and I believe that's correct, right, Mr. Smith? That within the plans, within the site plan, there's access from the cemetery, walking access from the cemetery to the Discovery Park Sports Field parking lot, right?
Well, the way we have it shown is it's a drive aisle with one of those manually closing gates, and it's really designed to be for those really large funeral-type events where you want to route people in a circle through the main drive of the sports complex, more to bring traffic into the cemetery than back and forth by pedestrians.
So there'll be a, a gate for vehicles?
Yes, a locking gate that wouldn't be a normally open-type gate. It would just be in, you know, sometimes we have these very large funeral events, and we may want to coordinate something where we could bring the cars in through the sports complex or something like that. Additional parking, again, very rare, one, one of our large funerals that might happen once a year or something.
That same drive aisle, if someone, if a pedestrian wanted to walk from the cemetery to the Discovery Park or back, they could, the gates for vehicles, not for people, right?
We could. I just want to make sure we're addressing the security of the site. We tend to have a problem with people walking through, and that increases the vandalism potential, so, but yes, I think something could be worked out.
Okay, thank you.
Got to go. Comment, Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Just to, again, remind everybody, this is a conditional use item, although the city is applicant, it's kind of an odd situation as a board. But I want to just bring up a few items that I think we should have discussion on at least, and there's items that we brought up, and they're in the comment section of our meeting that we had with Paul Smith, and when Mr. McClellan, or City Manager LeCours, brought this forward for board discussion at the time. There was a few things I did recommend at the time as well. If you see currently today, we have a nice metal fence that's black-coated around the cemetery, which is, this is a beautiful piece, but then we also have decorative pink paver blocks that have white specks in them, that I don't think are fitting to the community of Tarpon Springs or fitting for the area at all. I'm not sure who decided to put those in initially, but the recommendation by staff is to continue the pink block across the street. So to me, I think it was a mistake to begin with, and I think the city should pay to fix the mistake, and look at some type of brick that's fitting more to the historic part of Tarpon Springs, or look at a limestone, which is a native stone to the area. It's, it's common, if you were to dig an area, you would hit a limestone bed, and it's also quarried here locally in, in Florida. So that would be my first recommendation, since this is a conditional use. This is something that, again, it's an aesthetic aspect. It's not actually public art, but it's an aesthetic part of the cemetery when you drive by and you look at the cemetery. The second item I want to bring up is, is just the type of plants that are being used, and I just want to remind the board that I do have a, a pretty good experience with landscape design and landscaping, knowledge of plants and other aspects. My dad's been doing this landscape design and installation for 40-plus years in the state of Florida, and I've learned a lot from him. When I graduated college, I went to work for him, and then always stay in tune to designs and plants that are out in the, in the native Florida habitat. There's a few items I want to recommend based on the design and the site plan. Again, this is an unusual situation where we're seeing a conditional use with a site plan attached, which I'm encouraged by because sometimes we see conditional use, but then a site plan takes some time to come back to us. So I would like to compliment the staff and the city manager for bringing that back to us together. Wax myrtles, they're a native plant to Florida. I would recommend that we move these to Yopon Holly. One of the concerns of wax myrtle is that they do start deteriorating after five to 10 years, and to me, that's not a longevity plant to use in our cemetery. I think we should use a Yopon Holly, again, a native plant, doesn't require much irrigation once established, and it has similar growing patterns. They also have a nice red berry, so they'll have a, some color to them at least once a year. Another, another plant that's being used on the east side of the property, I believe along a chain link fence that's coated, a black-coated chain link fence, is a pitasphorum, another plant that's been used in Florida for many, many years, but if you look at the growing patterns, pitasphorum typically becomes leggy, and I could use these flags as an example, and say the flags are leaves, and this is the bottom of the plant. As a pitasphorum gets older, typically, the bottoms, the bottom leaves will fall off, and you see the branches of, of the plant instead of the leaves. I may recommend, there's two different options, a potocarpus is a great option, and also a viburnum suspensum. They, they're full hedges, they grow from the bottom to the top, they will drop their leaves, but they stay full to where you don't see the, the branches of the plant. The third item that I want to bring up is that I recommended, again, when the staff brought this for commission comments, and there wasn't any other comments by any other commissioners, and there wasn't any opposition by any other commissioners, if I could remind the city manager that and the staff that as well, at the time, about the pink block and also about looking at a, how would I say this? When you're in a, an area to visit a loved one that has been buried in a, in a cemetery, or you're at a gravesite, funeral, or service, you want to make sure that it's in a secluded area, and you don't want to be in an area where cars are racing by, and you're able to see these cars. So one of the recommendations I made was looking at a potocarpus hedge. It's a natural hedge, it's not a brick wall, or a block wall of any sorts. And it's a, it's a, what would I call a living wall, and a green hedge that could, that could be controlled, it could be kept at knee-high, it could be kept at chest-high, it could be kept at overhead as the plants grow, but we have the right to trim it as we need. And when you look at the plant, it says a landscape buffer of eight feet between the road and the south side of the property. And, and that landscape buffer is a bunch of grass, and then it has a few trees sprinkled throughout the landscape buffer. But what I consider a landscape buffer would actually be a hedge of some sort and a row of plants, so I would make the recommendation of putting potocarpus in from, on the south side of the property and on the east, I'm sorry, the west side of the property as well. And the, and the email I sent to you, I believe Trish printed them up for you, there's some examples of what the plants look like. So you could see, I know in the past, that was one of the commissioner's complaints that I was explaining these, but you didn't know what they actually look like. So I wanted to give you a few options to see actually what a Yopon Holly, a potocarpus, and a... and a viburnum suspensum looks like. And as a reminder, people don't always think of landscaping being a huge part of the plan, but it is aesthetically one of the larger parts of a plan when a site plan comes before the commission, because there are plants that are going to be growing there for many, many years to come, and where they're put is strategic and for a certain way, and we want to make sure that the right plants are being used, especially since the city of Tarpon is paying for these plants to be installed. So as a commissioner with experience in landscaping and design, I would recommend that the pink concrete block not be used in this design. That would be, I mean, it'd have to the commission to decide, either a brick that's similar to the brick on the outside of this building, or a limestone rock that's native to this area. And then also that we replace the plants that I made a recommendation for, and include an additional hedge around the property where the cemetery is going to be, to add some seclusion when you're visiting loved ones, et cetera. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner, I'd like to ask a question. First, I'd like to see the extension of the cemetery, it kind of looks the same as the main part, and if we can keep it the same, same design. I like the fact, I don't have the knowledge that you have on the landscape, okay? But is any landscaper that we can use on those columns, so they won't look like this, instead of spending all this extra money to replace all the columns that you suggest?
What you could do is that you could actually put the rock over the current stone that's there today, or you could even brick over the current stone today, too, so it wouldn't cost as much to fix those current columns that are there. One of the positives, too, is that there's current Yopon Hollies at the current cemetery as well, along Tarpon Avenue, so those would also fit in a new cemetery site. But to address the pink columns where they're at today, it would be a pretty, it wouldn't be a difficult fix. It would be slapping concrete on the columns, and then either putting some brick that aren't thick brick, that'd be more, what would you, they're not pavers, they're like quarter bricks, I suppose. And then, or we could use a stone.
It's decorative brick, is what it is.
A decorative brick, okay. Or we could use a stone, a limestone that's cut, also that could fit on there. And then you see the brick that was used in the early 1900s as well, we're looking at the old city hall that's being restored now, and then obviously the old middle school and high school here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Commissioner, can you jog my memory, what pink columns you're talking about?
So at the current site today, there's the metal fence that's powder-coated, black aluminum, and there's columns along the way.
Are those not brick?
No, they're not brick.
They're black.
They're, they're paper blocks.
Oh, they're the concrete block?
Yeah.
And then they have a white cap with a light, right?
Yep.
So that can be a thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
Any comments?
My comment is just to remind the commissioner also that there wasn't a consensus on those items, and especially, I mean, the landscaping things, you know, what trees you change if you decide, or what, you know, that's not an issue, but we did follow up on the existing look of the cemetery. I sent you the email, which Paul Smith sent to you, to ask about changing the pick, the pink to another. Obviously, it's a different board, but all those members were asked if any that would agree, and only Commissioner Carr wanted, wanted to look at that, so with no consensus. And Paul Smith, if you see in the email that I sent you, said it was important, at least on the brick issue only, and again, because we want to be consistent of how it looks now to the new cemetery, which I've never had a complaint on how those columns look. But we made the step to send out to all the commissioners, again, about that, if anybody wanted to look at that, and there was none. So on that issue alone, we went back and checked if there was consensus to do that, and there was not a consensus.
Did you ask for consensus about that? Because that's pretty frustrating to me as a commissioner, since I was the only, and Mayor, I'm sorry if I'm stepping over here. Since I was the only one that made a comment at the time, and there is no other comments after that, and no one spoke up against it at all, I don't see how that isn't a consensus. I'm pretty frustrated as a city manager that you would come back then as a recommendation that the city commission makes to the city manager, and there's no other recommendations at night. I'm pretty frustrated by that, to be honest with you, Mark.
You saw the, you seemed to be ignoring commissioner, the follow-up email to you in the following conversation about those columns with Paul Smith that you wrote, and I think you're forgetting in the middle of there, you're forgetting what Paul Smith put out and sent to the other commissioners for that thing. You're leaving a step out that you can't leave out. All of you got a copy of that that I sent you after that meeting, before we went forward with this, about the drastic change, because you're not only talking about a change, something in the new cemetery, you're going to talk about changing all the columns at the old ceremony.
I have comments.
So, you know, we asked if anybody did, and there wasn't. You got two emails back, and there was a consensus otherwise not to go there, so that's the reason we go. So I just don't understand your frustration on that issue, because we made the extra step to see if there's anyone who wanted to look towards that. You know, you saw the email, and the board that was on it at that time saw the email, and there was not. So we respectfully disagree on how that process went, because there was a middle phase.
Because that's, our consensus are done via email, right? Not in public setting at meetings?
Okay. I was wrong. Yeah, I remember the email and what happened. I feel that we have so many things that we need to budget in the city without spending money to redo all the columns at the cemetery, and we want them to look consistent in both places. So I don't agree that we should, I'm not a plant expert, so I can't say anything about plants, but I don't agree that we should be spending the money to redo all those columns.
Just, you know, to add some background to the discussion as it relates to the existing columns, right? First of all, Commissioner Carr has extensive knowledge in landscaping, and I'll go with him nine times out of 10 on some of his recommendations as it relates to landscaping. So in this regard, I personally know and familiar with some of the hedges that he's talking about, and I think that they do make a better hedge than what's proposed. So, and that scenario, I'm all good. Some historical knowledge, though, is that for a long time, like forever and a day, we had the worst knee-high, knee-wall retaining block, no lights, nothing at the cemetery, and I don't know when it was, but, you know, years ago, it was a board approval for the existing block that you're talking about, and in my mind, I see, I see like a brick look, but now that we've talked about it, I'm more familiar with what you're talking about. So that was, that design, that columns, the gates, the lights, at the time, were a big improvement to the cemetery, like huge, to where this board was ecstatic about it. And ultimately, those columns were approved through that, through that board. So, you know, to me, thinking about it, I don't have, I don't object too much to the columns that are in place, that that's what the proposed columns are going to look like. I certainly think that there's value in continuity, as well as not, I agree with Commissioner Seber, in the sense that we have so many more projects that are more important than rework on some columns, to where I feel like, you know, there's value in continuity. Those columns were approved by this board, you know, a previous board, but I mean, they were, in fact, designed, "Do you like these? Yes, we like these, let's move forward." I think even we added the lights, the lights weren't shown, and we added the lights. So I mean, there was quite a bit of dialogue back then, right, which was not that long ago. So, you know, as we look to move this item along, I think Commissioner Carr brings up good points regarding the landscape, and I'm happy to support you there, Commissioner, but I think that the columns, if they're going to be congruent with the columns that exist today, I think that, you know, that might be an option that I would, that I would go with. I mean, unless you can convince me otherwise as to why you don't think that they, that they go. I mean, if we were going to whitewash them with a limestone color, I would take what's there now versus, versus the limestone color, so. Some of my thinking.
So you agree with the landscaping, but not the column?
Yeah, I think he brings up good points with the landscaping. I mean, I definitely, you know, I would like to have more of a hedge look, you know, I think it's more aesthetically pleasing. You know, I definitely don't want a hedge that looks like this. I think that was a good example. Viburnum's a great choice, or the potocarpus is a good choice. I'm getting ready to do a huge potocarpus hedge at my house, so I think that's a good idea. But I think that, you know, as it relates to the columns, I think we might have other priorities that are, that are ahead of redoing the columns that are five years old, maybe?
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I agree on the landscaping aspect. I don't have a lot of knowledge in regards to landscaping, but that certainly makes more sense, having that hedge there, keeping that privacy for people that are coming and showing their respects at the cemetery. But I also, you know, I can't speak for past board consensus, but I think it's dangerous to use the mindset of, oh, we got bigger fish to fry, so maybe we should just gloss over this. I think this might be a unique opportunity to maybe right some of our wrongs in the past, and maybe if those past columns don't look up to speed, and just saying, oh, it's easy to make these congruent with this, I think it might be at least worth looking into those updated columns, especially because right now, I mean, all we, all we need to do is get a quote on them, see how much it costs. I mean, we're talking about numbers that don't really exist yet here. So I'd definitely like to see something about the new columns possibly, because I do think they can look better, and I think our residents deserve better.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Attorney, is it possible, should the board decide that it's the best option tonight, to approve the conditional use as it relates to being able to do a cemetery there and then come back to the site plan? Or do we have to approve it, approve it at one?
The way the resolution is drafted right now, it's approve them both at the same time. You may want to ask city staff to bring back a recommendation or quotes to do what Commissioner Carr is suggesting, and ask the staff to hold off on proceeding, even though you approved the site plan, to address the column issue and to address the landscaping, if that's still an issue. I think that what I've heard so far is the landscaping is probably, you've got a consensus there, but.
The columns, we don't.
Well, there's been no vote yet, so.
In terms of the process, though, like, if this was a private deal, we wouldn't be moving forward on spending money without the conditional use approval of knowing that we can do a cemetery there, right? So that's kind of my thinking, is that as it stands right now, you can't put a cemetery on that piece of property, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So through the conditional use approval, you could.
Correct.
Okay. So we all agree, I think, that a cemetery should go there, we just have a little bit of differences on how we want the site plan to look, right? So if it was me, I would like to approve the conditional use approval, and then if we don't think that we have consensus, or we do think that there's other things that need to be, need to be tweaked on the site plan, that we, you know, revisit that in the immediate future, because I think this is a project that we need to get off the ground. But at least by doing that, we know, okay, you know, when we come to terms on the site plan, at least we have a piece of property that we know is approved for cemetery site, right? Because right now, we just own a piece of land that we can't put a cemetery there until we approve the conditional use, is the way I see it.
You can add a condition. The staff recommendation right now is for approval with four conditions. You can add the fifth condition. Fifth condition could be approval by this commission as to the column aspect of it. So that way you can keep this project moving forward, and you can, you know.
You good with that, Commissioner Carr?
We're not stalemated.
Yeah, I think as long as we have that follow-up, that works.
Regarding the column?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Attorney, you're saying add number five that says, if the commissioner was to move approval to add language that says, move to approve the site plan, or move to approve the conditional use as well as the site plan, but the board will revisit the column at a future date? You can claim that.
Yeah, and I think obviously we want to clean up the language, and the lawyer and city staff can do that, to add that number five, but so long as there's that direction, we can do that. So the answer is yes.
Is that good with you, Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah, I think we can make clear, because it seems like, you know, if it's the board's decision, and again, one tree, another is not mine, the decision of the hedge, if you want to hedge there or not, it seems to be a consensus there, so I don't see why you can't incorporate. So you'd probably have to, would you have to incorporate the change of landscaping as one of the conditions, the change of landscape, and then the coming back on the columns?
Correct. You'd have two conditions that you would need to address if the consensus of the board is that you want to include landscaping, that's condition five, and then you also would need one to address the column aspect. If you're directing staff, it can be just simply over directing staff that prior to the project going to site, to construction, they, staff has to come back with alternates for the design of the, I don't know what they're called, columns for the fence, is that what it is? Columns for the fence, something to that effect, and then, again, it would be up to you what type of shrubs you're proposing, because you've talked about two or three different options, so you'd want to include that as well.
And then the only thing else I would ask for is a clear consensus definition of what other type of column that we're to look. You mentioned a couple, but if we're going to go out and bring options, you know, we want to specifically know from this board, what is the other option? What is the other type of column and pricing and stuff that you want us to bring us? Real clear, so we don't have to go back for consensus.
Why don't? Sorry.
Yes, I don't want this project to not move forward, so any way we can keep it moving forward, I agree on, and then coming back and putting five and six on there so that we can make a decision at that time, because we do need to know the pricing, we need to know a lot of things before we decide on it.
Before we move forward, you also could continue this application to your next meeting, and we can address it if necessary with the conditions, if you need, if you need more time.
It'll take us more than a week, I think, putting the two conditions on is the best way to do it.
Well, since we already have a consensus to move forward with it, that's instead of those two items, and you bring it back in the later day, because one week, it'd probably not be enough.
Okay.
Let's get a motion to that effect.
I need a motion for that.
Let me go ahead and read the resolution, because that's really what you're going to be voting on. Actually, I think I already read that resolution, you just need a motion to approve then.
I'll move to make a motion to approve resolution 2019-07, and then application 18-109, with staff recommendations one through four, with an addition of the following. Number five, replace the wax myrtles in the site plan with a Yopon Hollies. Replace the pitasphorum hedge with potocarpus, and add a hedge along the south side of the property and the east side of the property of potocarpus as well. In addition, number six, to approve a column, but a decision to be made on the material at a future date, between the current block that is used in the current cemetery today, an alternative brick of a dark clay color similar to the current city hall, or a limestone coating, which would be a native stone to the Florida area that we live in.
Second.
Any other questions, comments? Any public comments on this item? No? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tia Pining?
Yes.
Mayor, who is this?
Yes. Item number six is the resolution 2019-06, the application 1908, the Meadows Mobile Home Park Community Center site plan. This is also a quasi-additional.
Yeah, so I've already gone through the quasi-additional procedures. I just would ask if the commission, if there are any expart communications you need to disclose, or if there are any conflicts of interest that you need to disclose. If not, I see none. Staff presentation.
Thank you. This is a site plan approval for Mobile Home, for the Meadows Mobile Home Park. It's an improvement of, of the existing community center, basically an expansion of approximately 770 square feet for the existing structure, addition of 912 feet of square foot health club, in addition of 830 square foot pool. And again, the Mobile Home Park is located at 505 Inklet Boulevard, and it's in Mobile Home Park Zoning District. The property size is 54.11 acres, and that's not changing as part of this application. Essentially, what's happening here is the Meadows Mobile Home Park has actually in the process of completing their final phase, and as a result of that final phase, they're adding additional folks to the park, and as a result, they're looking to upgrade that community facility that they have. That existing facility is located adjacent to the central, interior to the project, and located central to the main stormwater pond. located central to the main stormwater pond. What you have before you is a site plan that is consistent with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. You normally wouldn't see projects so small as this, but the reason why you have this is the expansion is just above the threshold, where they have to come before you for that. They can't just do a minor modification, they're beyond that minor modification. So that's why you're seeing that application where it's an expansion of an existing facility. With that, based on the design of this project, there is no additional concurrency concerns or issues, there are no site planning issues. The technical review team reviewed this on February 7, 2019, and had no objections of this request moving forward. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan because it's consistent with the Land Development Code and your comprehensive plan and your city's concurrency management system. And we have the following conditions. The developer is responsible for meeting minimum criteria of the Land Development Code and for acquiring all other jurisdictional permits and approvals. Construction plans shall be consistent with the approved site plan. All requisite fees attended to the project shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. The site plan shall expire at one year from the effective date unless the applicant has filed for a building permit with construction plan signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed in the state of Florida. And that is all that we have, with the exception of the Planning and Zoning Board, heard this application on March 18, and vote as unanimously to move it forward. And I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
The applicant, is the applicant here in the audience? If you'd like to, you can make a presentation at this point. If you would, step down here to the microphone, though. Do you have anything that you wanted to present?
Uh...
Okay, thank you. All right, public comment? Anyone from the public want to address this application? Seeing no one, the city can make a summary if there's any additional information you wanted to provide.
City has no additional comment.
Okay, but the mayor, then let me go ahead and read the resolution by title only, and then the board can take it under consideration. This is Resolution 2019-06, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 19-08 requesting site plan approval for Meadows Mobile Home Park to construct improvements to an existing community center, including a 770 square foot expansion of the existing one-story community center building, addition of a 912 square foot health club, and addition of an 830 square foot pool located at 505 Angklop Boulevard in the Mobile Home Park MHP Zoning District, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. There was reading of Resolution 2019-06 by title only.
Are there any commission comments on this item? The chair will detain a motion.
So moved.
Take it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Penny?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes. Item number seven is the ordinance 2019-06, this is the application 19-27. LDC amendment, street vacation fee, this is the first reading. City Attorney, if you please read the ordinance.
This is ordinance 2019-06, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending section 216.00 of Article 12 of Appendix A, the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, by removing the requirement for calculation of the application fee based on land valuation and retaining the standard application fee of $200, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2019-06 by title only. The second reading would be on April 16, 2019, and this was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on March 22, 2019.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments?
I have a comment, Mayor. I'd like to get a little bit more background as it relates to this application. First, I have a question for the city attorney. Is it unlawful to charge what we're charging now?
It's not unlawful, but I think that it doesn't pass the smell test if you want to use it that way. It's improper and unlawful to sell right-of-way, and what the city is doing, what has been in the code for a number of years, at least since 1994, is a way to extract the fair market value of the right-of-way by making it an application fee. And so after having reviewed that and having done the legal research, it's my opinion that you should change your code. You should remove this portion of the code and apply just the regular registration or review process fee, and in this particular case, it was $200 in your code. You're not revising that. Of course, that can go up or down, but the purpose of that $200 is to cover the cost for staff review and staff costs.
So my thinking is, not that it happens a lot, but sometimes we vacate right-of-way that is of significant value, and my recollection in the past is that when the applicant, whoever that may be, buys the right-of-way, it goes into streets and sidewalks, is that right? Or other right-of-way funds. Where does it go?
They have to purchase other right-of-way.
Purchase of other right-of-way. So it serves a purpose, right? You know, we haven't bought any right-of-way recently, I don't think, but I mean, there certainly comes scenarios and opportunities to purchase right-of-way. So I'll give you an example. We vacated Lake Boulevard right-of-way that runs over by the yacht club, right? And it was like 80 or 100 grand that we got for this right-of-way. Was it 80, Commissioner? Yeah, I mean, it was significant. I mean, it wasn't 200 bucks, it was 80 grand, you know? So unless it's unlawful to charge the fee that we're charging, I see a use for those funds. You know, in some cases, we have original class that were laid out, you know, in the 1800s and have shaped the development of the town. It's the city's land, you know, some of the right-of-ways, well, all of the right-of-ways, not all of them, but I mean, most of them are ours. The town was platted with regard to some of those right-of-ways. So I don't think to reduce the fee to $200 is in our best interest, and if anything, I think you might see, and that's why I asked you, Mr. Attorney, if it was unlawful, if anything, I think you might see an increase in applicants wanting to reduce or wanting to vacate right-of-way if it's only 200 bucks to do so. So I think that there's certainly, right-of-way is designated years in advance in some cases for a reason, and I don't see any reason to just forfeit that value for $200.
Thank you. I have the same concern. First, I want to talk a little bit about this application. I am in support to help the Tarpon Springs Authority, because they're providing housing to people they really need to have that, so waiving the fees for, for this one here, the 50% appraisal value for the right-of-way, I'm in favor of doing it, just this particular application, because they're providing, they would be providing housing for the poor people, and I think it's necessary to do that. But I agree with the vice mayor that this is a code that was actually adopted back in 1990, 29 years ago, and actually, it worked all these years, so now we discover that it's not by the law, and if it's not an issue, I don't think this should be removed. But we should make an exception for this particular project, being that this is the Tarpon Springs Housing Authority to provide housing to the people, if we can do it.
Okay, I think that before we continue on, this is a public hearing, and we should probably get the public to speak and then get into the point. I just thought we were at questions mode.
Is this not a separate application?
This is...
They are separate applications.
Talking about number seven, which is just...
You are correct.
Which is just the Land Development Code as it relates to street vacation fee, and then the separate, number eight is a different application.
That's correct. But this is a public hearing, and I think that you should receive public comment, if there is any, before you complete the process here. And you're all giving your comments before you've heard what the public had to say, and I just wanted to caution you on that.
Okay.
So...
So you suggested to go to public comments first.
Public comment, and then close the public hearing, and then discuss it amongst yourselves, so...
Good. Are there any public comments on this item?
I've got a question, is that okay?
Go ahead.
Yeah. If I could ask the city attorney to help me and the rest of the board and the public watching, understand the difference between law and then also, is it, would it be case law, or cases that have been settled in similar situations?
Yeah, so obviously, the things that we look at as your city attorney is, is we look at state statute for direction, we look at the attorney general for direction, we look at case law for direction. In the memo that I provided to you, I've given you some of the attorney general opinions that talk about selling right-of-way. I've given you case law as to, you know, what cases have addressed the issue of selling right-of-way, and that's the distinction. A court has already made a determination, and I've listed a couple of those items in the memo, where courts have specifically found that you cannot sell right-of-way. And I really think that that's exactly what you're doing. You're just doing it in a way, and I thought it was fairly clever and artful for whoever drafted the code section, to basically skirt the law on selling right-of-way by requiring a fee based upon the value of the right-of-way. And so that's really what I'm talking about, it really doesn't pass the smell test, and so that's why it's my recommendation, you know, so that you're not challenged on that. As for the question of the mayor, and I'd kind of like to address that now, you can't waive the code section for one applicant and then not waive it for others. You need to apply the law consistently, so it either you apply it to everyone, or you remove it from your code, so it doesn't have to be applied to everyone. You don't have the legal right to waive your code on that particular issue, and I would caution you on doing that.
That was my second question, too, and it's pretty clear in the code, the way it's written, that there's no waiving or anything along those lines in applicant, that it states 50% of the appraised value of the right-of-way in this situation.
Mr. Attorney? Oh, sorry.
Yes, please, go ahead.
No, I didn't, I think Commissioner Carr was still speaking.
I think I just wanted to know, to hear the difference between case law and actually state statute, and how that works.
Okay, well, there is no state statute on point, you have your code section that we look to, and that's what we're talking about, but, you know, I did not reference any state statute, because there is no state statute specifically on point. It's all attorney general opinion and case law.
Okay. So if we were challenged, do you think this would uphold in the court?
No. I think that a court would see it the same way that I do, and that is, is that you're basically selling the right-of-way based upon some value of the land associated with the right-of-way. But the question is, is who would be the one that would be challenging it? I'm not really sure. Maybe this applicant would, the next item on your agenda tonight, I'm not sure. But I don't really feel comfortable in defending the code based upon the law that we've found in doing the research on this. I'm not saying it's illegal, I'm just saying it would come to a challenge.
Any other questions?
I do have another statement, but if you want to go to public comment first, so we can discuss it further.
Yeah, I actually had a question. How does that $200 fee that we're suggesting, how does that compare to what other cities are doing? Is that high, is that low?
It's very similar to what other local cities are doing, and Ms. Vincent may be able to, I'm not, sorry, sorry.
It's okay, it's fine, you know? She's a hard act to follow.
Heather.
It's okay, you know what? I just answered anything these days. So it depends on the jurisdiction that you're in. I've worked in several counties where it's significantly higher, and I've worked in places where this is right in line with it, with, you know, within $50 of that. It just, it really is a local preference of the commission when you're talking about fees, but it's consistent with some of the jurisdictions around here.
And as a follow-up, Mr. Attorney, that can answer, one of the things that convinced me, as you know, I'm somebody who likes to accept money for the city all the time, but I'm also a foreign man of the law and reading cases and stuff. To your knowledge, are any of the cities, Penneless County or area, has anything like this, where they try to mask the selling of it as an application fee in this way?
I don't represent any cities, and I'm not aware of any other cities in Penneless County that do this.
I'm not aware of any either, I don't...
I can tell you that there's none in the three states that I've worked in, that I've worked professionally in, so you're a unique.
That was the tipping point for me, as much as I like getting the money and getting money in and using it, as a man of the law and as a city and a board of the law, attorney says something he can't defend in court, even as much as I like taking the money, and I just don't think us as a body can do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Question?
Well, I have a couple more points to make, but I don't know if now's the right time to do it.
I think we need to go to public comments, then come back, unless you have questions.
No.
I actually have just one more question, sorry. So how many cases a year, let's say, how many times does this come up? Like, is this, I mean, pretty infrequent, right?
It's very infrequent because of the fact that the law has been in existence for a number of years. I mean, you've got attorney general opinions back in the 70s addressing the issue, so over 50 years, and so there is not a whole lot of new case law. I think that the most recent one that I found was in 2008, a 2008 case, so 11 years ago was the most recent one.
Okay.
We need to go to public comments now.
Need a protest, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I don't understand, and I'm not involved in this, but right-of-ways are platted for a reason. And the city must, I think, needs to look at right-of-ways before you start letting people ask for them, or vacating of right-of-ways or anything. We have right-of-ways platted in the City of Tarpon Springs for reasons, and even though we're an older community, years ago, they were platted, and people have asked to have the right-of-ways vacated, and I know in the 80s, when I was commissioner, they used to do that. And then a development would come in, or some people wanted to build, and they, there was a reason for it, to lay lines, to lay pipes, and the city would get in trouble. You said they needed to build living quarters. That's understandable if it doesn't need to be used for anything in the city. So have the city, Mr. City Manager, I don't ever remember one, even when I was mayor, that we ever did a study on right-of-ways that aren't in use or areas that the city owned, be able to sell them or vacate them, and then have trouble later on. Do you understand what I'm saying? And that's a very dangerous thing when we do start selling them or vacating them, because you don't know what the future brings, even like, we have streets that need to be opened, and we've vacated the properties, and we could not open the streets. We need to be very, very cautious with what we sell in right-of-ways or vacate for developments or people wanting larger lots and items such as that, because in the future, you don't know what's going to happen, and the city may need that property. If it's a dead piece of right-of-way, that's different, and it has to be a study, and then the city government has to make a decision on how they're going to word it and use it, and what they're going to do with it. And if you look at the old maps, we've got them all over the place. Do you understand what I'm saying? No, you don't.
I was asked a question, so I'll go ahead and answer it. I completely understand what you're saying. Again, each property comes back to the commission to vote yes or no on, so you've got two separate items. This is a separate item to talk about the vacation of the street fee, and then there would be a separate item that would come up to say, do you agree to vacate this piece of property to ex-property owner, either on one side or the other, or in this case, that it just happens to be another person coming before us tonight that owns a property all around it? So it's a separate...
I don't understand this one, but the point is, we need to look at all these areas in the city to see what we can keep and what we need, and we don't know what the future's going to bring when the forefathers decide to make the city, and they have right-of-ways.
Thank you.
Because you can't take it back.
Any other public comments on this item? Back to the commission.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a question. What's the obligation of the city to actually vacate it right-of-way?
You have no obligation to vacate right-of-way. That is totally a legislative decision on your part to make that decision. You have no obligation to vacate right of way. That is totally a legislative decision on your part to make that decision.
So this is something we can always control.
Every single application will come before you for you to consider, and it has to meet certain criteria. And if it doesn't meet certain criteria, that will be brought to your attention by city staff. And more than likely, it won't even get to you if it didn't meet the criteria until it has been met. So, yes, you control every vacation application. It's not decided by anyone other than this commission.
Can I say something, Mayor?
Go ahead, Jeff.
If there's food for thought, we've heard all this other, is there food for thought in this item of common sense? Probably if you don't do this, whether we're able to or not, if you don't do this, you're going to probably stop the project, a project that we have been looking for, for 20 years to get rid of that decrepit, disgraceful housing that is called Mango Circle. And to take Mango Circle and make it like all the other places we've revised on. If for nor the reason of these other issues, you will get more money added on. You'll add to a bunch of vacant property around Mango Circle that you may spur to be developed. You have got as bad a housing anywhere as the Mango Circles. Anyone who's been there has. The chief and I have worked for 30 years. We have tried for longest time. We should have granted grant to do this several years ago, but I think political reasons gave another city it. They've got the grant now. We're going to construct a nice unit. Housing Authority is going to just do a nice unit to compare with all the other things on here. This one hurdle, if this is left in there, could stop all that. So you'll have no development. You'll have the place like it is now, which is probably one of the biggest eyesores in the city. And if there's any other reason to waive besides, if you don't buy the legal, well, it's not, you know, he didn't say it's silly to keep it. So any reason to do this, you need to preserve this property coming up, because that's one of the biggest properties for affordable housing that we'll see in this city in a long time. And it also could spur growth to those areas along Distin and all the vacant property around there with a brand-new housing unit where our citizens can live in and be proud to live in. So if anything else, take that into consideration, whether, when you're considering whether to do this or not.
Yes, I agree. I think that we really need to move forward with this because it is going to take care of blight and have a development there that we can be proud of. Also, if we can make these decisions in the future, the board has to decide on vacations, and, you know, it's always going to come in front of us anyway. So as far as this project goes, I believe we need to move forward on it.
Thank you. The Mango Project can still move forward. They just got to buy the right of way. I mean, and if it's a matter of whether it moves forward or it doesn't move forward, based on the right of way, and I'm, I'm assuming they need the right of way for more density? Why do they need the right of way?
Do you really, do you want to discuss this under this application, or?
I think it's being cross-examined to begin with, so I think it makes sense.
All right. I just want to make sure that we're following proper protocol. The reason why the right of way is being asked to be, requested to be vacated is because the complete design of the project is changing. When that original project was actually built, they actually had public, public right of way, and they have public utilities in there. All of that is now going to be transferred over to private development. All of the internal driveways and all of the internal utilities will all be converted over to the housing authority. So they will all be responsible for that. There'll be a master meter at the end of what will be the remainder of Mango Circle Drive. That's what's going to happen as a result of this. It has nothing really to do with the density increase because the property, they're not maxing the density out that they have on the property at this point. They're, they're doing the number of units that they can do based on the grant that they've received. Has nothing to do with the maximum density.
Well, I think, I bring up density because it helps illuminate my point. My point being, the right of way has value, right? I have a non-conforming lot, that's just an example, that's zoned R100, right? It's non-conforming. I got to have 10,000 square feet. I only have eight. I have a piece of vacant right of way right here that I'm going to ask the city to give to me. That gives me an extra 2,000 square feet. Well, now I have a conforming lot, right? So it's, it's value. So it could be the same thing with an increase in density. Now you have more land to work, work with, so you have more units that you can get, okay? And to me, as it relates to legal liability, I think if we change this, we have more legal liability with the people that we've charged for the right of way in the past than we do with the people moving forward in terms of legal liability. That's my take. So, you know, I mean, you're saying we can't do one thing for somebody without doing it for the other. Well, by changing this code and allowing Mango to do it, you're, you're basically doing what we're trying not to do. I mean, go tell, you know, the people who gave you the money for, go tell the Stamos, go tell Carol Martin, hey, we just get, we're now, now it would only be 200 bucks versus 80 grand. I don't think that's going to go over well. I mean, in terms of legal liability, right? I'm not saying that they would cause a ruckus, but I'm just saying, if, if that's what we're concerned about, I think you have more from the people that you've charged in the past than you do the people in the future.
I think this is a question the city attorney for that.
So I, I appreciate your concerns and your comments, but the law is whatever you make it to be the law. So if you change your code, it will be applied prospectively and not retroactively. And, and so I don't think that there's any exposure at all for people that have paid that fee in the past, because you're applying it prospectively. And then, then I would also mention to you that obviously, if anyone had any claim against the city that is more than four years old, it's, it's barred by the statute of limitations. I don't know how far back those developments are. I don't know, Commissioner. So it would be barred anyhow, any type of claim like that, but I don't foresee any exposure there.
Thanks, Mayor. I've got a quick question also for the city attorney again. This is becoming a pretty interesting topic here. I do see a value in the land, but my understanding is that we can't charge a value in the, for the land to vacate it. But the city is able to skirt that by charging an application fee that's half the price of the value of the land. Am I correctly saying that?
That's the way it currently is.
Okay. And this is just kind of talking this out by hearing different discussions on the board. Could we add language to the current code that addresses nonprofits in a situation? Although I know you're not, you're making a recommendation to remove the fees of the application down to $200, but based on other commissioners' comments, would there be an opportunity to add language to the code that discusses that nonprofits could receive a reduced fee in the event a vacated is asked, or property is vacated, request is made? And then, secondly, I'm not sure if the housing authority is a nonprofit or not also.
Okay, so the answer to the question is, is no. I don't think that you can do that legally. You need to apply the law consistently on all the applicants that come before you and not pick out one type over the other.
Okay. That's, that's clear to me on your recommendation, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, that actually kind of answered my question, so I'm good now.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Any other questions? Carol will detain the motion.
Move to deny and leave the ordinance the way it is.
Second? Do we have a second? Motion dies. Need another motion?
Move to, I'm sorry. Move to approve a motion based on staff's recommendation.
Approve the ordinance 2019-06?
Yes.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
No.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
No.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance passed.
We are now going to item number eight, which is the ordinance 2019-07, the application 1907, Tarpon Springs Housing Authority, Eagle Ridge Vacation of Mango Circle. This is the first reading.
Yes.
And this is not a quasi.
No.
So city attorney, if you please, read the ordinance.
Ordinance 2019-07, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs Florida vacating and abandoning right of way for 1.057 acres of Mango Circle lying within the vacated blocks of the Lake Butler Heights subdivision as follows. Block B, lots 17 through 20, lot C, lots 7 through 10, lots, lot, I'm sorry, block F, lots 1 through 9. Block G, lots 1, 2, 8, 9, 11, 18, and 19, and block H, 12 through 19. Providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for proposed and future easements, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2019-07. The second reading will be on April 16th, 2019, and it was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on March 29th, 2019.
Staff report, please.
Yes. So this request is to vacate approximately 1.05 acres of a portion of Mango Circle. And essentially, it's that portion of Mango Circle that lies within the housing authority's existing complex. It basically starts right at the church and goes around the loop. So there's maps in the actual backup that show where the vacation area is being requested. This is being requested on behalf of the housing authority by the developer and the civil engineering firm that's working for the developer on the design of the future Mango Circle, or Eagle Ridge Apartments is what it's going to be called. Essentially, at this point, it's super, super late, so I'm not going to keep you. This meets all of the review criteria. It was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, and it was sent out for the mail notification. The technical review team actually heard this application on February 7th and had no objections. It's consistent with your land development code. I have one minor modification to my staff recommendation. The staff finds that the application does meet the review criteria established in section 2601 of the Land Development Code and recommends actually approval, not denial. And this, it should be of ordinance 2019-07, which is the ordinance you have here. I've included the valuation for the property in here because your current ordinance is still in the process of being modified in your previous application, so that till still technically applies until such time as there's a second reading to change the ordinance. So with that, I can answer any questions that you have, but this is in fact just the right of way vacation portion. You will see Eagle Ridge Apartments at your next hearing. The actual whole package will come back. So you'll see them together at the, at the final reading for this on the 16th.
So Mayor, I just want to make sure that this, the drafting of the ordinance, section two, is correct as well. I know you modified your staffing for recommendation of approval. Section two of the ordinance, could you take a moment to look at that?
Yeah, let me grab the ordinance.
And confirm that that needs to be modified as well.
Probably does.
Do you have that in front of you? Would you like my copy, Heather?
Yep, give me a second. I got, I got to get to the, to the exhibits. Yeah, again, this would have to read, "The city of Tarpon Springs hereby approves the request for vacation as all conditions of the LDC 2016-01 have been met, and the city retains all interest in the following described property, which is a legal exhibit for the vacation."
So the city is not retaining the interests in the, in that right of way, so that would need to change as well.
Not at all, not at all.
So it would have, it should read then in section two, "The city of Tarpon Springs does hereby..."
No interest, yeah.
"...approve the requested vacation as all conditions of the Land Development Code, section 16.01, have been met."
Correct.
"And the city is vacating and abandoning the following described right of way. See exhibit A for the legal description and exhibit B for sketch." Can we be on the same page?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure that it was clear that what you're considering tonight.
I have one question to ask you. Earlier, you stated that all the utilities will become private, including the wardens tour, correct?
Correct.
Which means that a master meter will be installed at the...
At the front end of the property within the public right of way, so that portion of Mango Circle that remains.
Responsibility regards to maintenance.
Only at the mass, only on our side of the master meter for the utilities coming into that master meter assembly.
Any questions? Any question coming?
I've got one. To me, I'm encouraged to hear that the site plan, and I'm assuming will be coming back, because to me, I don't feel comfortable making an approval until there's actually a site plan, something in place. I'm assuming it's a, a complete redevelopment across the site.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just something I'm ignorant of. Are there still residents currently living there?
That's something that we can ask the developer, because I'm not really sure if there's anybody actually living on the property or not. So they'll have to come up and be sworn to me to answer that.
How's it going? Justin Quarter with North Star Development. We're co-developers with the housing authority. And to answer your question, yes, there are still residents on site. About 40 residents currently live there.
About how many? I'm sorry.
About 40.
40?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any plans currently in place? And this might not be a question for you. This might be a question for Heather. But do we have any plans in place to help them with their temporary housing, or how, how is that going to work?
The housing authority actually takes care of that as part of their process. When we went through all of the other villages that were renovated at different points, they actually were housed temporarily in surrounding hotels.
Okay, so they won't be moved like out of Tarpon, right? Like, they're still be within Tarpon?
I can answer that. So we've actually hired a relocation consultant, and as part of that relocation, they're given a voucher. And that voucher can take them anywhere within Tarpon Springs or really anywhere throughout Pinellas County. So it's going to be up to the resident to decide where they want to move to, and then we're going to help them relocate.
Okay. I was just concerned for the families that were living there right now. I mean, I know school's still in session and stuff.
Exactly. So based on our timeline, we're hoping to have this happen during the summer so that the children will have any problems relocating.
And then how long is construction projected to take? Do you guys have an idea?
Um, it generally takes about 12 to 14 months.
12 to 14 months, okay. And then just my last question, is the church that, that's right there, is this going to disrupt access to the church? Like, as far as their parking goes? Because I know it's, it's kind of the one, the one road.
They actually won't be able to disrupt the church's services. They'll have to work out an ease across accidents agreement for construction if there's going to be any activity during the times the church is going to be utilizing that.
Okay, so you guys will have to contact them and talk through it.
Yeah, that's part of, that'll be part of the actual next step, which is the building permit process. We handle that during the building permit process so that we are actually ready for construction. So when we get those easements agreements together, there's, for usually for a limited time.
Okay, thank you.
I've got an additional question for Heather, or maybe someone else in the city. There, I believe there's a pretty big dip in the road as it approaches, is it mirrors? Then, I'm not sure what mirrors is going to be from Mango Circle. Does that ring a bell?
North? That, we, we are going to be fixing that as we do our portion of mirrors.
Okay, so that's going to be addressed, so there's not like a belly of water there?
Yes, that's in our plans for our part of mirrors that has to go from Distin to US 19 that's, that's already in design phase now.
Okay. Secondly, Commissioner Donovan brought up a question about relocation pertaining to the current residents. Was it about 40 families or 40 residents?
40 units, so it's probably families, yes.
Okay. So that could be anywhere between two to five people. So you're looking at 80 to 200 people that could be displaced and put in our hotels. Uh, one of the, I've received multiple complaints. City manager, if you could help me out, understand this one a little bit more. My understanding is that hotels are not, they're temporary housing, or not temporary housing, they're temporary economic, uh, shelter, is the best, best way I can think of right now. I've received a lot of complaints about the Tarpon Inn and other hotels in Tarpon Springs when the other public housing was being redeveloped and updated, that there's people living at the hotels. And everyone kept telling me, there's codes in place that say hotels are not to be used as apartments, but they're to be used as hotels, and it's a, a temporary aspect, and that would be a couple days, a week. And if they said this, the project's going to last 12 to 15 years. And if they said this project's going to last twelve to fourteen months, how would that be regulated in Tarpon Springs? And would we want to look at as a commission to see if there's an alternative area where additional shelter could be used somewhere else in the city somehow? I'm not sure what that would look like, if we looked at bringing in trailers and putting them on a site somewhere, or if we looked at alternatives other than just giving a voucher to the families to put them in the hotels as an alternative. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm not sure if, I'm not sure where that was. Heather, do we have anything on that, on the hotels? I mean, I'm not sure the other housing?
Generally, the hotel transitional housing is an initial step to, for where the residents are going to get relocated wherever they're going. It's generally not the permanent, they stay there for the duration. However, if there are issues with people staying and how, staying in the hotels and living in the hotels, there's definitions in our land development code, and we can certainly go through those definitions of the land development code when we talk about the larger project at the next meeting and talk about that issue, because I'm sure we can have the Housing Authority representative here as well, and they can kind of speak a little bit more to, you know, what their plans are for transition. Again, this is just the vacation at this point. We've got another bigger component of this project we're going to be going through at your next meeting, next week.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tarrapany?
I'll just say that I don't have any reason to not support the project based on the last agenda item. That was, you know, based solely on my feeling that there's a lot of value in right-of-way, so it doesn't have anything to do with this, this application at all.
Commissioner Seaver?
I agree with Vice Mayor. I would like to move forward with this and make a motion.
I also like to say that this is a, a project that I support, and this is something we've been working for a long time, trying to get housing for the area. The Mango Circle is an area that it needs to be pared down and start all over. So yes, I will detain the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-7, application 19-07, with the following sections. Section one, section two, again, this is with staff's correction that they had with the city attorney. I would like to add a section three, "The vacation and abandonment shall be conditioned or continued upon approval of the site plan for the proposed property by the Housing Authority of Tarpon Springs." And then, effective section three would be section four, and section four would be section five.
So Commissioner, you're tying the vacation to being contingent on the site plan approval?
Yeah, and I think that's just a wise thing to do. If we have further vacation requests in the future, that maybe someone just wants to vacate the property just because, I think it's prudent to do that as a commission to make sure we have some type of plan in, in place before we just say you can have the property.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I like it. I'll second the motion.
Good, you got your second? You have your second?
You got a second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarrapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to, item number nine is the appointment of Commissioner to Forward Pinellas. Just to remind everyone that we received a memo from Commissioner Donovan, that he is, he expressed his interest to serve on Forward Pinellas Board, also on the Homeless Leadership Board. The Forward Pinellas, this is a replacement of Commissioner Carr, as he was representing the Tarpon Springs, Safety Harbor, and Oldsmore. This board meets on a second Wednesday on each month, 1:00 p.m. So do we have any other volunteers for it?
I have interest in that board, Mayor.
You have any interest there as well? Okay, anybody else?
I, I do not, I...
You do not, of course.
Yeah.
You couldn't make it.
I couldn't make it because of work conflicts.
Yeah, I know. Okay, well, we got two people that are interested in the same board.
The Friday doesn't work as good as the Wednesday for me in terms of the morning schedule, but, you know.
So you, so you pass?
No, the Forward Pinellas option works best for me out of the available option in terms of the board.
So then, I need a motion.
Motion to have Vice Mayor Tarrapany on that board.
I'll second the motion.
Scott Schuh?
Yeah, this is a board that I've been looking into for a little while now. I know you guys got my memo. I'm really interested in it, and again, I'm, I'm available to do it every time, I won't miss a meeting. But this is, this is a board that, you know, it's arguably, as far as the county boards go, it's, it's really one of our biggest representations just because of the cycle that it's on. And I'm fully prepared and available to dedicate my full time to serving on this board and being prepared for all the meetings.
Any other comments? It's very unusual to have two people be interested in the same board. Usually, we just find to get one, so. Well, we have, any other, any other comments? Commissioner?
I believe that as Vice Mayor, with your experience, that you would serve this board well. And Commissioner Donovan has expressed an interest in another board as well, which I served on for four years, so I would like to see Vice Mayor be on this board.
Okay.
I've got a, Mayor, if I may, I do, this is also an unusual situation, right, that we've got two board members, who we hardly had one during the last board that could serve on this. I think we have two very qualified applicant, or two very qualified board members that express interest in this board as a whole. I know there's a motion on table currently, right now, for Commissioner Tarrapany. Commissioner Donovan, Mayor, do you mind if I address Commissioner Donovan? Okay. I, I know you're new to the board, and you showed interest in the Homeless Leadership Board, and that you're very interested in the Forward Pinellas Board, which I think is probably one of the more prominent boards in Pinellas County. Would there be interest still to continue with the Homeless Leadership Board as well, if you didn't serve in the Forward Pinellas role?
Yeah, absolutely. Again, I, I would like to serve on both of them. I think I can, you know, have enough time and passion for both of them, but no, of course not. If, you know, if I didn't get the Forward Pinellas one, I'd still go forward with the Homeless Leadership Board.
Yeah, well, when the time comes to discuss about the, the Homeless Leadership Board, maybe you want to go. So we have, is any, is any public comments on this item? Here none? Well, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
I'm, I'm sorry, just to clarify, what are we roll calling right now?
This is that the motion on the floor is to appoint Vice Mayor Tarrapany to represent on the floor of Pinellas.
Okay, no.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarrapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. The next appointment is for Pinellas Sun Coast Transit Authority, the PSTA. This is a replacement for, of Vice Mayor Panther, representing the Tarpon Springs, Safety Harbor, and Oldsmore. That continues through September the thirtieth, 2020. This board meets on last Wednesday every month. Do we have a volunteer for that?
Commissioner Donovan, you have any interest in that? A little bit more high-profile?
Yeah, I, I looked at that initially, but usually those Wednesdays towards the end of the month, I'm booked up at work with meetings those Wednesdays and Thursdays, so I just, I don't, I don't want to commit to it and not be available to go to the meetings.
Okay.
Commissioner Seaver, didn't you share interest in this in the previous meeting before?
I did, but I've only had one year left, so I can't commit to that time, and I'm on the pension board as well right now, so I'm just going to stay on that.
Commissioner Clark, can you make it?
No, my work schedule's pretty committed during the daytime. I could occasionally make quarterly meetings and nightly meetings, but here in the day at 9:00 a.m. isn't going to work with my schedule.
I'm already serving with two boards, so we need to spread.
We could pass this to another city, am I right? That this is a, PSTA is shared amongst multiple cities?
Yes, there's an agreement. The answer is yes, there is an agreement between the three cities, and I don't know if city manager would have any other comments on that?
Who is the next city for that? Do we know?
I don't know in the rotation.
I don't know who the rotation is.
North County, we need to hold a seat on that.
But I can reach, I mean, the other two cities, I can reach out to them.
Is it Safety Harbor?
It's Safety Harbor.
Is it Safety Harbor next?
I believe so.
Oldsmore, Safety Harbor, is it?
I'm not, it, yes, I believe it was passed to us by Oldsmore, but I'm not positive if it was that one or Forward Pinellas. I believe, I want to say it was...
So we can reach out to the...
Next one would be Safety Harbor.
I, I think Vice Mayor asked a valid question, and did, does it have to be an elected official? Did I, was that clarified? Okay.
So Mr. Licorius, would you please reach out to the other two cities?
Yes.
Thank you, let us know.
Does, you know, motion to postpone that until it takes certain? Okay, table it.
I need a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarrapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. The next is the appointment for the Homeless Leadership Board. Commissioner Donovan, you expressed interest in that?
Yes, again, just to reiterate, this is another one I know I can make all the meetings, and I am interested in working more at addressing our homeless issue, and part of that is collaborating with the county. So yeah, that's something I'm interested in.
Okay.
Move to appoint Commissioner Donovan. Ready for that motion?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd second. The homelessness is a pretty important thing in Tarpon Springs to be addressed, and to have representation there is important.
Any comments on this board, on this comment?
Thank you for your willingness to serve on this board. I know it's a tough topic.
Any public comments on this item? Here none? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarrapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Item number twelve is the appointment to the Budget Advisory Board. Well, thanks to the Citizens Academy, now we have many applicants interested on this board that we didn't have in the past. So we have five vacancies to fill, two regular members for two years, two years' term, two regular members for three years' term, and an alternate member to fill the unexpired term for Mr. Hamilton. So we start off with the two-year appointment.
I, I would recommend Claire McCoy.
How do you go about this, Mayor, in recent, recent history?
Well, what we have done in the past, what we have done in the past is each person will recommend the people that they want, and then we have a motion on.
On the, for a consensus on a person?
We do, excuse me, we do the, the two-year term, then the three-year term?
Yes.
And then, so I could take tally. Thank you.
Okay. So, Commissioner Seaver, you, you select Claire McCoy?
Yeah, for the two-year term.
We're doing the two-year now?
Yes.
And do you have another person? Because we need two.
Ryan Dodridge.
Vice Mayor Tarrapany?
I'm good with Ryan Dodridge, and my second person, I'll make David Banther.
Vice Mayor Tarrapany, I will ask you to change that. I'd like to see Vice Mayor, former Vice Mayor Panther for the three-year.
That's fine.
Please, please change that?
Yeah, that's fine. So you want me to select a, a second person then, assuming that we're going to put David in the three-year?
Yeah, I'll just put us...
A little bit of risk there, Mayor. All right, so I'm good with Ryan Dodridge, and I saw we had a, I saw an email come in for another person I don't see listed here.
That's correct. That was for Valati.
Valati?
That was sent to the board today.
Okay, I'll do, but he had an application in long before today.
He did. It was just in a different...
So I'll do Ryan Dodridge and Valati.
I, I'll agree.
Commissioner Seaver's changing hers.
So I, I'm going with Valati and...
Valanti?
Yes, and Ryan Dodridge.
He's not on the list. He had an application in for a long time.
The board received the email today.
All right. So you go with Ryan and Valanti?
Yes, sir.
And so do I.
Okay, so he gets two votes there. Okay, Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I'm good with Ryan Dodridge and Claire McCoy.
I would also say Claire McCoy. He's, I believe, an ex-CFO of Firestone Roofing. It's a pretty large business that's here, and he's, and then also Ryan Dodridge as well. But I'd be happy to move Claire to the three-year term.
I also like Claire McCoy, I think is a very knowledgeable person, and Ryan Nowridge. So we have three and four, is that correct?
That's correct. We have Dodridge and Claire McCoy for the two-year positions.
Move to appoint Ryan Dodridge and Claire McCoy to, to, two-year, or to, two-year terms for the Budget Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any comments on that at all?
No.
Any public comments on this item? And roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarrapany?
Yes.
And Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. Now we're going to do the three-year term, and the last time, we start with Commissioner Seaver, Commissioner Carr?
Okay. I'd like to nominate David Banther and Melody Engel.
Okay. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate David Banther and Beth Wanaker Cook.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes, I like Cassie Hall. She was a Citizens Academy graduate just recently, and David Banther.
I also like David Panther and Valanti. So we have David Panther, we have four votes, right?
That's correct.
And all the others, they have one vote.
That's correct. We also...
So you still need my vote, Mayor.
That's correct.
Still need his vote. I'll do, I'll do David Banther, and then I'm happy with one of the other people that one of y'all mentioned for the alternate, but I'll do Valati for the three-year term. I think he's a good boy.
So you want him to have a three-year term?
Yes, sir.
So we do have a majority now. I need a motion.
Move to appoint David Banther and Valati.
Chris.
What is it? You got it? Okay, of course, two is, two, three-year terms on the Budget Advisory Committee.
The next appointment is...
We need a vote.
Oh.
We need a vote. You had a motion and a second. We need to vote on that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tarrapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus?
Yes. The next appointment is for an alternate member to fill the unexpired term for David Hamilton. This term expires... This term expires March seventeenth, two thousand twenty. Commissioner Carr?
Can I just preface this? Uh, I'm really impressed on the applications that we have, uh, for this board. It's unusual that we have so many qualified candidates. Um, we've got a lot of candidates in here that have a lot of experience. Um, I've, experience is great, and I, I believe that experience is needed. I do think we have experience on this board. Um, with that, I think Cassie Hall is a younger individual who's expressed some concern, is, um, or who has expressed interest in this board. She's very educated, uh, so I would support Cassie Hall as an alternate.
Okay. Commissioner Donovan?
Beth Wanaker Cook.
Commissioner Seber?
Uh, I would vote for Cassie Hall. She just graduated from Citizens Academy, and she has had a lot of experience, and, um, and I think she would be the best fit.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Got an MBA from the University of Florida and currently compliance officer with Citibank. I'd go Cassie Hall.
I also go for that, Cassie Hall as well. So we need a motion.
Motion to approve Cassie Hall as the alternate member, uh, to fill the unexpired term of David Hamilton, which the term will expire March seventeenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? No, roll call, please.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuesis?
Yes. Next item is the future work session schedule. City Manager.
As I said in my backup, um, we've got a lot of items that are coming up. A lot of the items are something that you don't wanna put on a regular agenda, probably, because it would take too long with the other items. Some of the ones that's been mentioned in the past, and some of them's coming up, I, I've mentioned in here, um, discussion on design guidelines, sign code changes, goals and objectives, city manager, Public Art Committee direction, and probably some others out there and stuff. So what we need to get a consensus on is, is to look at a, a date, um, and how we wanna conduct, you know, how you wanna decide as a board of all these things that have been mentioned previously, who are ready to talk about and not talk about, how you prioritize those, really with the schedules and stuff that is going, um, if we wanna do it on an off Tuesday, um, the first off Tuesday available is May twenty-first, um, people get back from vacations, regular meetings, um, and that sort of thing, that would be the only option, um. We would have to look i- if, if off Tuesdays, which is always reserved in this room, is something that is a problem, um, for this, or if we wanna have other ones to set, you know, after that, um, then we need to look for auditorium dates and when it'd be available, or, you know, move upstairs and stuff. So we just need the consensus of, of when we wanna get together, and, uh, what we wanna talk about, and how we wanna talk about it. Do we wanna get a list? Do we wanna decide which ones we're gonna deal with first? Again, some of these items, almost one of them could take up, you know, two, two and a half hours, depending on, for instance, how detail you wanna get in looking at changes to the sign code, or how detailed you wanna get. The minor changes, major things, you know, you could talk about two or three hours on one item and stuff. So somehow, all of us together as this new board, um, need to gather, get together and set, you know, which ones we're gonna do first, priorities and that sort of thing. So, again, the first available date, um, on an off Tuesday would be May twenty-first. So, just open up for your discussion among yourselves of, of.
But what, what I think, yeah, well, i- it is necessary to have a work session with the new board to identify the goals and objectives for the short-term and the long-term. Uh, I believe that, uh, the off Tuesdays, it works for me. Again, uh, I rather, uh, I like to hear from, uh, my fellow commissioners because they have jobs. See what, what days is more convenient for them, but, uh, I am available on the, uh, off Tuesday. If we can't have it in here, we can have it up there. Yep, but it is necessary to have a work session to identify the goals and objectives. I go more, yeah.
Uh, I agree, uh, the twenty-first is fine for me, but I do think, like you mentioned, Mark, that we need to, um, give you an idea of what we wanna talk about, whether we start with short-term or long-term, but you need to have, you know, our, uh, input to know what we're gonna talk about before we get to the meeting. And, uh, you decide based on priority of, uh, what commissioners have asked, that we make a schedule, right, then?
Well, that's what the, your first work session should be, identify what the goals, what, what goals we're gonna be talking about. And based on that, we can actually schedule the other meeting to, uh, analyze all the other goals and, and goals.
I, I feel like, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I feel like we've already identified many of these. Uh, I know that we have a new board, uh, and we just keep meeting and talking and not moving forward, and that's kind of frustrating for me. Uh, some of these things we've been talking about for five years, and they haven't come to fruition. So, I feel that we need to communicate with Mark and start talking about some of these things that we wanna have happen.
Vice Mayor? Thank you. Uh, I'm good with the Tuesday. I think it, you know, it's easy for me with the family schedule Tuesday, and, you know, I got the meeting. Um, as far as the, how the agenda is set, I think it's definitely productive to have an agenda set prior to the meeting. Um, and I think probably one of the easiest ways to do that is just prior to, a week prior to the work session, everybody email Mark their one item that they wanna talk about. That way, everybody has something that's, you know, important to them. We're not, we're not loading our plate for a five-hour meeting, but, you know, and we'll see how it goes. I mean, at the next meeting, at the next workshop, then you set it from there, but I think if everybody says, look, I, my agenda item is, is this item. And then if everybody sets that, you got, you know, five items that are important to everybody's, uh, uh, agenda or heart, or whatever you wanna call it, but, uh, in talking about this, uh, work session, something that the city manager and I have talked about recently, in trying to, uh, utilize more of our buildings, our re- resources, or whatever, uh, in other municipalities or in other counties, um, sometimes they use for one meeting a month, or for a work session, they use a separate facility. Um, and I think it would be awesome if we can start to use the Cultural Center, um, Cultural Center, right, on, on all nineteen?
Yes.
Cultural Center? I mean, we're renovating it, we're spending a pile of money, it's the old city hall. You know, it would be an awesome setting, I think, for us, one meeting a month, you know, whether it's a work session or whatever, to meet there, um. So, that's something that Mark and I have talked about. I thought it was a great idea when he brought it up to me, so.
When, when will it be ready?
Well, that's the thing.
Well, they say when it opens, that'd be a good thing for the opening month, when it opens, is to have actual, actual.
I mean, it's a beautiful building. We own the building. We don't ever step foot in the building. We might as well go there for a meeting a month. I mean, there's a little bit of stuff that needs to be worked out in terms of recording and stuff like that, but I mean, put our money where our mouth is. We're spending a half a million bucks on renovating it, you know, we might as well, I mean, we are the elected officials. We might as well con- conduct business there, you know? So, anyway, something to think about, but, but I'm good on Tuesday. I think it's productive for everybody to have an agenda item, and I'd like for y'all to consider, uh, the idea of the Cultural Center for a meeting, for a work session.
We just, we need to be careful not to have too many items on it, because five, five different subjects, that could be a very, very long night.
It could be.
So we need to be.
There might be two or three people that want the same thing, though, so.
It could also be short.
Prioritize, you know, like if, if two of us want same topic, then that would be one. And, you know, two others want same, that would be two.
I might talk about my topic for ten minutes, you know? I mean, it could be like, this is important to me, but I got ten minutes worth of conversation about, you know, I don't know.
Vice Mayor Donovan? I mean.
I'll accept, okay.
I'll accept.
Um, yeah, I mean, do you guys have any general idea of what you might wanna discuss right now? Or, I mean, I wa- I can give you some prep time, but, I mean, I got some issues written down where, I mean.
I'm game to talk right now. We, I mean.
Let's, let's just set about when we're gonna have this meeting and just tell them this.
Sure, what day were we talking about? Um, some Tuesday in the year?
May twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Tuesday.
Alright, that works for me.
Of May. Work for you?
Yes. Can I have a comment now?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Uh, I'm open any day. I think it's important that we start talking about some of these. Uh, Mark put in his, um, in his memo, some of the items are design guidelines, sign code, goals and objectives for the city manager, public art committee direction. Uh, I do find it pressing, um, for two items, uh, although I support all of these items, and I brought it up in the past, that we should have work sessions and, uh, discussion topics. Um, the sign code and the public art committee direction, I think, should be at the top. Uh, goals and objectives for the city manager, uh, was part of our discussion during the city manager review, uh, topic, um, about a month and a half ago or two months ago, and I think the discussion at that point was to put that around August or September, when the evaluations are done, uh, to set the goals and objectives for the city manager for the year based on the budget. Am I remembering that correctly, city manager?
That was the talk, we talked about that.
Uh, so that was discussed in that point. Uh, I would make the recommendation that we look at, uh, as a board and, uh, um, work session, the sign code and public art committee direction, uh, as one of the first topics that we discuss. Uh, secondly, I do support, uh, Vice Mayor Terapany's, um, direction or recommendation about meeting at the Cultural Center. Um, one thing that we have also not done in the past, since I've been on the board for the past years, is recorded the work sessions. So I, I do think it's important that we have a recording there, a video, and that can be replayed, uh, for the, the residents to watch, because that is an important aspect, and there's some great discussions that happen amongst the commissioners. Uh, there's not a whole lot of public that show up to these meetings, but it's still, um, a lot of important, um, comments I'm sure that we would get by the residents from, uh, um, the public watching it on TV, or on YouTube.
The only thing with that, of course, is, is we, we have no portable.
Yeah, we just, we just approved, I thought, um, a camera, didn't we?
Well, if you have the meeting up in the new room, we're gonna do.
Okay, but they said they could take it outside and do recordings too. It just couldn't be like a, a situation of running around with it. I thought it was, um, that Suzanne, is that her name? Suzanne? Um, described that we could take it out, but we couldn't actually, um, like, you wouldn't be recording like Epiphany with it, because you've got, it's not mobile. You can relocate it, but it's not something you would wanna, to run around with it. Maybe we could get clarification on that, um, but it, I think it's important to have some type of recording, um, that the public can hear, even if we have it recorded audibly.
Well, we, we've done that before, have the audible.
And then post it on the video, or put it, post on the YouTube channel, or on our city TV site too.
Any other comments, suggestion?
Again, I'm open for any day. Uh, I'll make it work. I wanna get some stuff done.
Any public comment?
So just for clarification, so I understand the consensus.
Want to? Can I ask you to get to the podium, please?
I'm not drinking my equilibrium. My pu- the public needs to hear these work sessions, and they need to be part of the work sessions to express their feelings on them too. The old days, every other Tuesday was a work session, and they were very productive, and you didn't stay here till eleven o'clock, because you knew your answers and you had your information. The only time we stayed to three and four o'clock in the morning, when we were doing the rezonings into Tarpon Springs. But I'm glad to hear you're coming to work sessions, and you'll start bringing issues up that the public needs to know about, and I congratulate you on saying that it needs to be recorded so the citizens can hear. It's been long in coming, 'cause I know I've asked for them too. Thank you for doing the work sessions.
Will you have consensus?
I, I, I just wanna understand how we're gonna, how we're gonna do it and set the agenda, um.
We're gonna supply you with, uh,
With our priorities.
Our priorities?
One.
One item.
One item with each.
Does that give you adequate time to plan, then? Do you need to plan from a staff level to provide data to us as a board, or?
I gotta give it to him a week out.
Okay.
You good with that, Mark?
But i- i- yeah, if you, I mean, if you got the item now, if you know which item's your number one sooner.
Yeah, at least a week out.
Send it sooner, yeah. But, but if it's sooner, um, like I say, the ones that you know staff, for instance, design guideline will heavily involve planning. Sign code's gonna heavily involve planning, so those ones like that, um, you know, that, if you know it's your item within the next week or so, and hey, that's the one I'm going on mine, you know, you know, let me know that, but at least a week, but, but like I say, I'll take it to start preparing for it now, if, if you have it now, to email to me.
So May twenty-first, please put that down on your schedule? Will be the next, the work session.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure too, um, when we send those emails, that the whole BOC will get them, because if I get my one issue, I don't want it to be a duplicate issue. I'd rather, you know, make the most of the work session and get five issues on there.
Yeah, as long as we don't answer each other and do that kinda thing, like, like we've been putting it on there, which I like to see, do not reply to. Do not reply to this.
Okay.
I know Tom's happy with that caveat when you put it on there.
Yes, thank you.
When you, when you put that do not reply, it makes our city attorney very, very happy.
Yep.
And I'm trying to be careful. Remember, if I send something group, send it back individually, don't, it, it's hard, it's easy, I've done it to it, and, and hit it. You automatically reply, but because it's a group, you're sending it to everybody, and that's the problem, so. Remember, if anybody says something group-wise, don't just reply, take it out and reply individually to me, um, that way, and we've been doing a good job of that, so.
Okay. Well, that concludes the agenda tonight. And we go to staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanna say I look forward to, uh, working with the new board, and, um, that's it. Thank you.
City Attorney?
No comments, thank you.
City Manager?
No comment.
City Clerk?
I also congratulate everyone for their win, and look forward to working with you as well, for you.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Um, I just wanna say I think it was a really good, uh, first meeting, and looking forward to working with each and every one of you.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes, um, obviously, I'm a little disappointed that I wasn't selected mayor. Uh, it's been a tradition to select the senior commissioner, uh, to be Vice Mayor, and, um, I feel disrespected. Um, and as everybody knows, my commitment to the city, uh, and involvement has been apparent. Um, I, I try to always be out there for people. I answer business owners. I'm a business owner, so I make sure that I care about our business community and our citizens. Um, I'm very disappointed the protocol was not followed. No disrespect to you, um, Vice Mayor. But I will continue to, you know, be involved and, and, and do what I need to do, because I respect this position and, uh, and our citizens. Um, I feel that, uh, the mayor's suggestion to not select me was orchestrated. Uh, that decision was made kinda quickly here, um, and either for personal or political, uh, reasons, and, uh, questioned whether sunshine was broken, and I have to say that, of the way it went tonight. And probably other people who watched it thought the same thing, uh, 'cause I've already gotten many texts. Um, so, um, there are lots of projects I've been working on in the last five years that I, I plan on trying to get done this year, and I'm gonna be work ver- working very hard to get that done this year. And other than telling you what my feelings are, uh, I, I will continue to try to work with you, because that's, that's, you know, what my position is. But, um, I'm disappointed, 'cause this, this does not happen, and, uh, feel that it's a personal attack on me. I just wanna say there's a public, uh, arts and crafts event on the docks this weekend. Um, also, I met, uh, I went to the public art committee meeting today, and, uh, I'm excited to, to know that, uh, the project that, um, I was passionate about on the, on the dock is gonna start next week. So that roundabout project will be starting next week, and, uh, I'm looking forward to it being completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, uh, I also wanna express frustration on, um, the mayor's, um, appointment. Um, I'm happy to support the mayor and support the vice mayor, but I do think that it was, uh, not the most respectful thing to the current commissioners who've sat with you for the past two years, at least, um, to bypass two of them, and again, I'm excited that Mr. Terapany, that the mayor has confidence in you. Uh, was happy to support the mayor, was happy to support you as vice mayor, um, but, uh, I'm also disappointed in the, the lack of confidence in myself or Ms. Seber, uh, in the nomination. Um, with that, I would like to say again, congratulations to, um, Vice Mayor Terapany on being appointed Vice Mayor, also being elected, um, and running unopposed. Secondly, mayor as your reelection, congratulations. And again, Connor, uh, Commissioner Donovan, welcome to the board. You're gonna have a great next three years. Uh, I just wanna say again, this has been one of the more, um, I'm excited about this board. I'm excited about this board. We've had more communication and more discussion, um, than I've probably had on the majority of our agenda items and meetings, um, overall in the past couple of years. So I'm excited to serve with you all. And I think it's great to have, um, some board comments going back and forth on some of these discussion items, even though we don't agree on all of them. Uh, I think we had, did find some compromises tonight, um, and then we also found some areas we didn't totally agree on. Uh, that's going to be a common place, I'm sure, as we work together, um, as we remember that we're representing the city as a whole and the residents as a whole. So again, excited to serve here with you all and, uh, to serve the community as a whole, and looking forward to this next year. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I'm really excited to be here. Um, you know, this has been a, a long time coming. I'm, I'm happy to serve with you guys. Um, and I want to emphasize that nothing up here is ever personal, um, whichever way, towards me, um, towards the mayor, towards any commissioner, you know? We all wake up in the morning, and we want what's best for Tarpon Springs. Um, so regardless of what decisions happen, um, you know, I'm, I'm excited to work with you guys. I'm excited to work forward. Uh, two situations I just want to update you guys on. Uh, one is my work with the youth programs. Uh, if you guys follow the campaign, I plan on being pretty heavily involved with our youth sports programs here in town. Um, my work with them has already started. Uh, nothing that we need to vote on. I just want to get it on your guys' radar. Um, I'm, right now, I'm trying to narrow down different nonprofits, and I'm talking to other cities that do this for their youth programs that can collaborate with Junior Spongers, Little League Baseball, and Tarpon FC Soccer, and, you know, uh, give them equipment, uh, sponsor different, uh, kids registrations for low-income families. Uh, I just wanted to give you guys an update. That, that has started. I am meeting, um, I'm, I'm hoping to set up some meetings within the next month with those nonprofits as I narrow them down. Uh, but that work has already started. I'll bring it up, uh, again, whenever I have an, have an update for you guys. Uh, the second thing I wanted to bring up is that, uh, I just had ran it by our city manager, and I talked to Ron Herring about it too, is possibly introducing a budget update once a month, um, just in the name of transparency for our citizens. Just a super brief, uh, staff presentation up here with literally just one or two sheets of paper, clear graph that says, here's the expenditures from our general fund, here's where your tax dollars are going. Um, and just break it down month by month. Um, again, keep it as simple as we possibly can.
Allow me to interrupt you, but it's getting eleven o'clock. We only got two minutes left. I need to extend the meeting.
No, that's, that's fine. No extension needed. I just want to update you guys.
So let me extend the meeting, then you can have the floor again.
Sure.
So I need a motion to extend the meeting?
Extend, extend ten minutes.
Ten minutes? Need a second?
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber? Vice Mayor Terri Penny?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, my apologies again for keeping everybody here. I know it's been a long night. Um, but yeah, I, I want to put together an email, uh, maybe have another meeting with our city manager about it. Uh, and again, just one or two sheets of paper. It actually was inspired when I was meeting with the department heads, and they just had a really clear, you know, here is what our department has done, month by month, for the past, you know, year and a half. And it put it together so clearly for me that I immediately understood, okay, here's where our money's going that's being spent in this department. Um, so kudos to our department heads, um, for those that, that maintain that. But I think it'd be interesting, again, just once a month at one of the meetings, if a staff member could get up here and just have a one or two page or one or two slide graph chart of where the tax dollars are being spent, and our expenditures are going month by month. Um, so again, not something, you know, that we have to discuss tonight. I'll let you guys digest it. I'll get more details on it, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Well, thank you. Well, first I wanted to say that, uh, it was a great first meeting, and I'm looking forward to work with the new board. And, uh, what I like to say is that, uh, it is, although it is understandable that some people are going to be disappointed because they were not selected, but I, I worked as a manager for many years for Verizon. I never promote anyone based on seniority or based on popularity. I always promote people based on qualifications and, and availability. So this is the year, with this is what I exercised today, and what I suggested for the board to, uh, make a motion, it had nothing to do, it was no political, it had nothing to do on anything else, but seniority should not be a reason to promote somebody. I think it should be qualification. Well, that concludes the regular session, and it's adjourned at right on at eleven o'clock. Good night, everybody.
Eleven o'clock for the first meeting?
That's supposed to be a ceremonial meeting, Mark. Who, who happened?